All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to get started. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs Regular Meeting of the City Council. The City Council is serving as a successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board from May 15th, 2018. This is our 4:30 PM study session here at the Carl Mays Center. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Present.
Councilmember McKee?
Present.
Councilmember Parks?
Here.
Mayor Protem Zavala?
President.
And Mayor Mattis?
Present. Would anybody like to speak on the budget today? It's the only thing on the study session. I see no one standing. Got no public comment cards. We'll go straight to our first item, which is the approval of 2017-18 budgetary adjustments for revenues, expenditures, and transfers for the fiscal year ending January 30, 2018. Our Finance Director, Lynda Killer.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the budget is...
All right, I guess we'll listen to the presentation. There is a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Don't dare.
Don't hear a second.
...in almost three years, finally you said something you wanted.
I was seriously trying to get a second. Okay, move on, Ms. Keller.
Thank you. Every other year, the City Council approves a two-year budget, which is the financial plan for all revenues and expenditures for the continuous operations of the city. During the fiscal year, it is common for the Finance Department staff, as well as other departmental staff, to make budgetary adjustments to their individual budget to accommodate for various changes that have occurred in the day-to-day operations of their departments and the city based on the current day. In some cases, budget adjustments require the approval of City Council when there is a transfer of money from one fund to another fund, and when there are increases to overall expenditures or revenues for any departmental fund line items, which were previously approved by the City Council during the original budget adoption. Often, budgeted expenditures will need to be adjusted for new capital improvement projects, or for specific programs, or for operational costs that are brought forward for consideration by an outside agency or a staff member as approved by the City Council. The following budgetary adjustments to increase revenue streams were made to the Consolidated General Fund for triple-flip vehicle and lieu fee, property tax pass-through payments from the county, special revenues for marijuana cultivator tax, planning, building, and engineering fees, grading permits, transient occupancy tax, and other miscellaneous revenues totaling Over the past year, the city added staffing, increasing salary and benefit expenditure line items throughout the various departments, as well as title changes to certain positions to meet the need for the increased services demands in community development, the Police Department, the Finance Department, Animal Control, the City Manager's Office, and Human Resources. A total of 16 full-time staff positions have been added and filled since May of 2017, and budgetary adjustments were done totaling $1,351,803. Often, contract labor is used in building, planning, and engineering departments for the processing of specific work due to the change in demand for sources based on new development. By using this method of staffing, the city can better control costs during the slower periods of development in the city by reducing contract labor. Additionally, this year, the city also used specialized contract services for general plan updates, planning review of marijuana projects, additional building and engineering inspections, capital improvement project management, special studies for traffic and pavement management, and other operational services through contracts as needed. Staff did prepare budgetary amendments to the various contracted services in various departments totaling $424,500. The City of Desert Hot Springs has several public facilities which require ongoing maintenance, such as painting, signage, roof repairs, new flooring, plumbing, electrical, window and door upgrades, and upgrades to the existing alarm systems. This year, the City Council also approved interior and exterior tenant improvements to the Desert Hot Springs Animal Shelter, which has reopened offering various animal services, shelter for strays and lost animal, and licensing services. Additionally, the city purchased one additional PD vehicle and upgraded the animal control truck. Budgetary costs were $147,000. With the addition of 16 new positions comes increases in operational costs. Those costs include computer software programs, additional computers for staffing, phones, IT pads, office supplies, fuel for vehicles, copy paper, janitorial supplies, utility costs, postage, uniforms, travel and training, printing, and other costs associated. There continue to be ongoing costs associated with repairs and maintenance to equipment, property vehicles, and buildings. The additional expenditures were increased by $497,101. Next. Earlier this year, the third-party provider managing the recreational portion of the health and wellness facility was changed from the Coachella Valley Boys and Girls Club to Borrego Healthcare District. During that changeover, the city foundation noted that there were several repairs and general maintenance needed to bring that facility back up to the city's standards. Additionally, the city did purchase supplies for all ongoing school and summer school programs. The alarms also needed to be updated for additional security measures. The additional budget adjustment was $124,907. This slide shows all the expenditure budgetary adjustments in summarized categories, which have been made to the Consolidated General Fund, including police, fire, animal control, and to the Desert Hot Springs Health and Wellness Foundation totaling $2,775,466. Next. The overall increase in revenues for various line items were increased by a total of $2,825,404, while expenditures were increased by $2,775,466. The net effect of all the budgetary adjustments is a net revenue over expenditures of approximately Often, salary and benefit costs associated with staff are charged directly to three restricted funds. The increased percentage of shared costs for the two positions were made to the following funds. The Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District Fund 501 totaling $6496, increases to the gas tax fund totaling $71,498, and a small increase to the successor agency totaling Overall increases for these three funds were $141,280. The City Council approved the new City Hall project in February 2007, due to the lack of suitable working spaces for City Hall employees, and due to the age and condition of the three modular buildings currently in use. The city did move forward with grading underground utilities, engineering, and design of the new building, and other site preparation. Funding for this project will come from a variety of resources, including the Consolidated General Fund, the Equipment Replacement Fund, various development impact fees, Art and Public Places Fee, Off-Site Street and Sidewalk Fund, Community Service Area, and Emergency Preparedness Funds, and bond proceeds. The overall project is estimated at $7.2 million, with a portion of the funding coming from the General Fund transfers over the next two years in an estimated amount of $3.2 million. The city is currently working with an outside consultant to prepare a nexus, which will determine how much of each type of eligible development impact funding can be used to pay for the facility. Upon completion of this analysis, the city will know what dollar amount of funding can be charged off to each development impact fee to pay for their fair share cost of the overall cost of the facility, which will reduce the General Fund portion of construction costs overall. Staff is recommending that $2 million be transferred from the General Fund 001 into the City Hall Project Fund 222 this fiscal year, and then in 1819, another $1.2 million be transferred from the General Fund to the Restricted City Hall Fund 222. This concludes my report, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to go over it.
Okay, let me clarify. Were you serious about your motion? Were you serious about your second? Or did you...I'll open it for discussion afterwards.
No, no.
Okay. So we'll start with discussion. Mr. Betts, you want to start?
I'm not ready.
Okay. Ms. Parks? Any questions? Ms. Zavala?
Not above that.
Okay. Mr. McKee?
As the staff well knows, I submitted, what, in excess of 40 questions about this. So, a lot of this stuff I'm not going to bore people with. I think the staff's done generally a good job, and I appreciate it. I appreciate especially the badgering I've given them over the last few weeks. I just wanted to make some comments, because I think the important thing to understand is that this is a template, more than anything else, and over the next two years, there's going to be some flexibility as far as that's concerned. So I would make some suggestions generally, rather than looking at specific accounts. I've talked in the past about the way we track budget, where we track projects, and those sorts of things. And I think in order for this to work, especially as close as we're counting this, as far as the budget's concerned, the method that we're...we report not only to the council, but to the city manager, has to be a little more punctual than what we do now, and give us the ability to make adjustments relatively quickly. If we do that, I'm less concerned about the fact that we've got a little less leeway than we have in the past, so I would suggest that. Let me talk a little bit about annual leave. We've had some discussion about that, and what I would suggest is this. We, in our discussion, talked about the fact that in the private sector, people get bonuses. In the public sector, it appears that a lot of the cities give annual leave. My suggestion would be this, that the first year of the budget, we proceed as we are now, and during that year, set up a management-by-objective bonus system, putting together goals for each of the people that get this, and then use that as a method of calculating a bonus system, so that the payments are paid on execution and getting goals done, rather than just being something that people get automatically. And I would hope that we can talk about that and maybe put that in place. I think that takes care of my concerns as far as how it's set up, and I would hope that some of the people up here would support me on that. The biggest problem I think we have in the whole budget right now revolves around marijuana and estimating what money is going to be coming in, and I don't know how we can be even close on what's going on. I know that, from my perspective, we're still relatively conservative, looking at the number of square foot that's already operating, and the amount that's under construction now. But this is going to be such a variable, flexible, bloodbath, as far as what goes on in that industry, as people try and figure out who's who at the zoo and who's going to survive, that I think we have to be as conservative as possible with that, and be able to adjust what we're doing as quickly as possible. Two final things. Calpers. I would suggest, and I've talked to the mayor about this, having a study session as soon as possible about calpers, because I think all of the cities are dealing with the future of calpers and how that's going to affect their budgets. We're nowhere near in the circumstance of other cities that are in the valley, or even ones that are worse than ours. And I know that there's a city in the LA area that's paying 40% of their budget on calpers. But I think we need to discuss it. We need to make sure that we're not throwing good money out of after bad, and that we have a strategy for being good to both the employees of the city, but also the citizens of Desert Hot Springs. So I'm hoping that we can do that, and maybe make some adjustments to our tactics. The final thing, I talked to the city manager a little bit about disaster preparedness, and he actually made me feel really good that they're doing a lot of things as far as that's concerned. But being a crazy person, I kept thinking about that, and I think one of the things that bothers me, if you read about disasters, one of the biggest problems is lack of electricity. And what I mean by that is, we have numbers of people in the city that are on oxygen machines. We have numbers of people that refrigerate their medicine. We have numbers of people that just gave birth, or have babies, or kids that are not going to do really well in some of the climate we have in the city. So what I would suggest is this, and this is just Joe's crazy idea of the discussion today. We already assume that we're going to make these two buildings into an extension, hopefully, of the senior center. And what I would suggest is, we talk to Desert Healthcare District, and some people that we can maybe get grants from, to put battery banks in these buildings attached to the photovoltaic system we have right there, and create a backup electrical system here, so that we can have refrigeration, and even maybe air conditioning in those circumstances. Extend some of the issues I think that my friend, Councilmember Betts, has, as far as cots, food, water, those sorts of things. And basically, put together a plan by which we can help the people that are the most at risk if there is a longer-term disaster, such as a big earthquake that will literally cut the city off for a period of days, if not months. So, you know, I'm just throwing that out, because I think we need to talk a little bit about a five-year capital plan. We need to start thinking about things beyond, you know, patchwork solutions to some of the things we're talking about. I appreciate everyone listening to my drone. Thanks.
Mr. Betts? I might have to stop talking to you when we take a ride in the car, because you keep announcing the things that I want, but anyhow, take the thunder out of my sails.
If you do that, I'd be really happy, Russ.
Huh? No, I was taking notes. I could go first. I want to hear what he had to say first. Budget items exceeding what we had authorized is...how much?
Hold on one second.
I know there was a 2 in that number.
It is. There is. The budgeted revenue increases, which were $2,825,404, the expenditures were $2,775,466.
Okay, so we had...was it...last number was what?
2775466.
Okay, so we have 2.7 million of spending that we're authorizing, that we're approving now? Is that what we're doing?
Mm-hmm.
The spending's already happened, but we're going to ratify that now? Is that what's being asked today?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and I'm going to echo...
You still have a $50,000 net.
I got it. I'm going to echo Councilmember McKee's sentiments, that I would like to see a little tighter on timeliness of getting to the council for the formal approvals of some of these things. I know that we have discussed all of this at the dais, things that have taken place and going on, but we need to tighten that up a little bit. The successor agency had a modest fund increase. I'm just curious as to how that happened? What caused that?
Are you talking about the $5,000 figure?
Yeah.
That was actually an increase to salary and benefits for a staff member?
Oh, that's an increase in cost?
Yes.
Okay, so what I was curious is, how's the revenue coming in? Do we still have revenue coming into the successor agency?
Yes, you do.
Okay, and so we've had a property tax reset? Is that coming up?
No, currently, because until just recently, until we get all of our properties sold, we were considered fiscally insolvent. So what is happening at the Department of Finance level is what we ask for. Let's say it's $3.4 million. We get $3.4 million if they approve everything. Any excess stays with the state at this point in time.
Okay, so maybe I can get together with staff and you, and get a little...
Sure.
Primer on...
Sure.
Where we are on that. But my concern was, at one point in time, when property values were dropping, we were worried that there wasn't going to be enough in the Redevelopment Agency. We were looking to annex new lands. I mean, this history goes way back, but...so I just wanted to kind of get the barometer on where it's going now. So you're saying it's basically stable?
Yes, for right now. Plus, you are allowed every year $250,000 for administrative costs. That's what's allowed in the ROPS for staffing and consulting.
And we're consuming that, correct?
We're consuming just about all of it, yes.
Good job. Don't let the state have that. They took enough, right? Okay. One of the things I'd like to see is way, way, way back when, I'm talking almost 10 years ago, there was an individual councilmember travel budget. Now, I know my recollection is, we're still operating under a travel moratorium that was instituted at the time that things were so tight, we didn't even have $400 in the bank. And that was all well and good, but obviously, the conditions have changed. We now can actually go and do what's important, as far as getting out to events and making sure that...well, you know, all the work that you've done over the years to make sure we're in tune, and be seen, and to be educated on what's going on out there. So I would like to see back to old system. You probably remember that, where each councilmember has a set travel budget authorized, and some of us had a need to travel more, others didn't. So, you know, for example, Scott wanted to take a trip somewhere, then I could just say, "Well, I'm not going anywhere here. Use this amount." Transfer it over to the councilmembers. So be a general amount among all councilmembers, but each of us could count on, if we need to take a trip, or we had to do something on city business for whatever, that we'd have something specifically budgeted. I just want it all worked out and set, and put in place. The chief had said something about DIF fees for the Police Department, and I wanted to make sure that those are all consumed anywhere else in the budget that we can find. That was supposed to be the second funny thing you heard tonight. Annual leave being used, and it's vacation time. I've said this every year, and as you're going to...some of you have already heard this many times. I always think people should take vacation time, not bank it and be here day after day after day. There's extreme value to somebody getting away from work, getting a break from it, resting, and not just working year after year after year with no vacation, because they want to bank their annual leave or their vacation time. I would like to see a line item adjustment that says that we will not have any cash outlays for annual leave, other than those that are mandated by law, which are obviously when an employee leaves, the employee of the city, then they can cash that in and use that. If you're going to need to increase people's salary to keep them here, and that's being used there, then fine. Take away the annual leave, increase the salaries by that amount, but force people to take time off their vacation and to use their vacation. Budget for police, public safety, we all have that number there. The chief's given us that, I presume, and we're all comfortable with what you're taking care of now in this budget? You're comfortable with what you've got to work with? Okay, so now, there's other things that I call nuisance crimes. They're really not nuisance crimes, they're crimes, but they're the smaller things, like you pull into Stater Brothers, and you're at the ATM, and you turn your back on your pickup truck, and somebody reaches in and steals your tools, your generator or something, and you don't even notice it. Or car thefts, or anything else like that. I would like to see if we can budget something above and beyond to go and deal with these type of issues, so that the police doesn't feel like if they have to divert from something else, that they're worried about the funds or the resources coming from that, that this council would make a commitment to say, "Okay, we got everything well in hand from a budget perspective on, you know, the policing." But every time we...somebody says, "Well, why can't they do something about my stolen bike? Why can't we stop this bicycle theft or car theft?" The city will say...we always say, "Well, we have to take care of the Part I crimes first." And then, we have limited resources, but somehow, we've got to be able to find a way to go deal with these other crimes, so that the progress we're making in this city, we can go even further. And I would just like to have a separate budget that chief could use, experiment, try different things, whatever he knows how to do, to go and address these other things that I call nuisance. But I want to be able to leave my garage door open in the daytime, and not have to sit there and have one eye to see if somebody's going to come in and steal my bicycle. And if we can't afford...
Do you have a bicycle?
Well, I don't anymore. I did, it's gone.
Sorry.
Yeah, no. No, it's gone. My giant, really nice giant bicycle, mountain bike. I'm in the house with the garage door open, and the man door to the kitchen open, and I heard some commotion out there, and I go out, and I go, "Son of a gun." I didn't use that word. I was a little more, "But somebody stole my bike." So I don't want to live in a city like that. I don't want to have to worry about every time I go somewhere, I have to, you know, worry about stuff. So I want to put something in the budget for that. Give the chief some tools to work with it. So it's increase the police budget, but specifically for that type of thing. Pensions, I agree, we need a study session. That's a huge subject. I'm almost done here, by the way. We've got a decision to make. We had a presentation down at the League of California Cities. It was a long presentation, and we've also had a presentation from a consultant. But the decision we've got to make is, do we want to be the perfect example of the way to handle this calpers pension, and be all up to date, and the shining example of somebody who didn't cause the problem when it all crashes? Or do we want to take a different course, and we're going to do it the same way the rest of the cities do, when it all crashes, we aren't penalized? Because what's going to happen, I believe, is when it crashes, and it will crash, those that are all paid up are still going to get hit with an extra, what they're going to consider a penalty, that the classic is, "Wow, we did everything we're supposed to, and now you're penalizing us further." It's kind of like when you...the city and its water use. We do everything we can to conserve water, to the point where our per capita water use is just so much lower than the rest of the valley. But then, when they put in conservation, they said, "Okay, well, even though you've been good citizens and have conserved water, you're now going to save another 10%." And we're saying, "Well, what about these other people? So are we going to be good citizens and pay up ahead, and then when the thing finally shakes out?" So that's a real tough discussion, I think, that needs to happen. So I agree that we need a separate study session on that. And then finally, since disaster preparedness and cots were mentioned...I wasn't going to bring this up, Joe, but since you mentioned it, I'll go into long-winded detail on this. I would like to see, get a needs assessment on, like, air bottles for people, what this community would need, and rather than just doing seminars, we'd like to actually get something in, you know, non-perishable things, they're going to make life easy. The goal would be, when there's some big disaster in the valley, and CNN's all over the place interviewing people, they come out here and they say, "How did this little city do such a good job taking care of its citizens?"
Needs assessment.
And that's what we've got to do in the budget. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Ms. Parks?
Yeah. I'm only going to reflect on some of the comments already made.
You'll just agree with me more.
I don't think I can on all of them. With Mr. McKee's annual leave, I agree that bonuses, whatever, should be based on merit. I do believe that. However, at this point in time, until such time as we can get the employees back to what they were being paid after, during the fiscal crisis, where we took all the 22% monies from them, I think we should take every opportunity we have to try to compensate them until that time occurs. At that time, then we can talk about the merit system. But until that time, no. And as far as banking, you know, a lot of people want to take a prolonged vacation, maybe to Europe, like I did. You know, I took six weeks, one year, eight weeks, another. So I banked my leave until such time as I had enough to be able to go that long. So I think...I don't think we should be the Gestapo's of how their leave is used or banked. And I like your idea of a special budget for these so-called nuisance crimes. They would definitely be non-sworn personnel. All they would have to do would be to take...to be able to go out there and take a report, come back in and enter that report. So I think it would be, you know, somewhat advantageous for the Police Department to have that... to have that crew. You know, maybe your citizens on patrol could, could act in that regard. I don't know, but I think that would be a good idea. And as far as all of the goods for emergency preparedness, I believe we have a couple of trailers, don't we, of goods and merchandise? Medications and Band-Aids and all
Did in the past, we don't need
We don't, then we should do it. We have to have that, and we gotta get it now. That's always been mandatory, in my opinion. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Ms. Mal.
Well, I want to thank you for being so patient with me with like the million questions. I'm gonna bother you with two more. So if we could go to, uh, budget document page six.
Just on the budget itself or the budget adjustments?
These are on the budgetary adjustments, this, this item, so you want
You want to ask that question during the next item?
During the next
Is this actually on the actual budget going forward or is this on the adjustments?
It's pertaining to City Hall, so whichever, and whatever
Can you answer it under this one?
Yeah, it can be in either one, whichever you prefer.
All right, so, um, that was budget document page six. When we look at facilities and we go down to City Hall, and we can see there the, um, the, uh, the expenditures of what, you know, it will cost, you know, what we'll see coming out of fire, the fire development impact fee, parkland development impact fee, general facility impact fee, community center facility impact fee, sidewalk fund, et cetera? And then we go down, and then you see how there's like the, uh, the $1,400,000? That's just kind of in parentheses, and it doesn't have a designated name. What's that for?
That is money that's been estimated to have already been spent on this project.
Okay, I see.
So it reduced the 7.2 in total.
In total, okay, that was gonna be my next question because I was like, why? If we add all of them up, you know, it should add up to seven, okay, instead of the five. All right, that makes sense. And then, uh, the other question I had, which is kind of related to what I was asking earlier, and I totally get your drift now. So when we're looking at, what we're looking to spend from, um, these, uh, five development impact fee categories, we can see those reflected as, um, expenditures for fiscal year 1819 and it could potentially go into 1920, depending on how it works out. But then we have, um, in that facilities document, uh, budget document page six, you see how we still have the general, the general fund 3.2 million listed there?
Correct.
As a separate category?
Yes.
And we were talking about collecting half of that back from the development impact fees?
Correct.
Those, uh, that collection of that half will be collected after fiscal year 1920, right? Once we, once, because in these next two years, we'll be taking the money from the development impact fees to add up to what's listed here. But then moving forward, when we start recuperating the half from the general fund, it'll be in future budget projections.
Yes, but also, let's say in the next year, you bring in more development impact fees than we've originally budgeted. You will be paying back the general fund quicker than later. And also, you might have the, the total amount of money that you will need to pay for the development impact fee cost for that particular fee at the time you start the building. I just don't have those exact numbers now because we're working with Scott to get the full value for each impact fee for the building.
But there's flexibility, for example, to start repaying that 3.2 back sooner?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
And an agreement will be done where it'll be repaid back until it's paid in full. Whether the city council wants to use all funding every year to pay it back or use a portion of it, that can be stated in the document. Because I, I believe you had, had some concerns that you wanted to maybe hold back some of the development impact fee for another project?
Yes, yeah, for example, the, the parks category.
Correct.
Uh, you know, I wouldn't want to
Right.
Expend all of it and then not have any for, for our parks.
Right, that can be built into the document, that it's paid back until it's paid back in full, however long it takes.
All right, thanks.
All right, uh, are you back in the queue, Mr. B?
Yeah, but I just forgot what it was. So we're combining, we're combining item one and two?
No, we're taking item one right now. I mean, some of us made comments that are both, but
Well, then I'll just wait, I'll remember it when we get to two, then, right?
All right, number one is, uh, that, Mr. McKee?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify something so that everyone understands this. Annual leave as far, I asked this question earlier, and I, I think I remember it. If you nod your head one way or another, I'll know that I'm true. Annual leave is paid out in full on the 30th of June every year. It does not roll over, so that, that's one thing. The, the concept of annual leave, though, is paying overtime to exempt people. And this is where Scott and I and some other people have had a problem. As a general rule in the private sector, if you're exempt, you don't get paid overtime. And you're expected to finish the job with, with whatever your salary is. And I understand my friend Avon's concerns here. But my point of, of this change is not to change it this year, but in the following year, after which we'll probably put some additional salary increases in since we're popping a few this year, that, uh, we make it like the private sector, which is, once you get to a certain level, you're given goals for the year, and then a bonus that would be equal to what the, um, the, uh, annual leave amount would be possible for someone based on the goals that they met during that year. So it makes it almost exactly like the, the, the private sector would be at that point. The concern I have is, um, if, if a citizen comes in and objects to the fact that we're in, in fact, paying exempt people overtime, there are actually some legal issues, I think, that, that come up then. We need to get a personnel person in here. But I know the federal government is pretty sticky about the designations of exempt and non-exempt, and I'm certainly not an expert in this. But I just wanted to, uh, basically explain where we're coming from.
You know, I'll have some comments on this, but I'm gonna wait till the next item to make comments on that. I'll take, I'll introduce, entertain a motion in a second this time.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion, a second, to approve the mid-year budget adjustments and to approve the transfer of the general fund balance in hand. Uh, any other comments? I see none, please vote. And this is to, as a study session, we're approving this to the next available agenda for approvals, right? Or is this approved as?
I should use this. Item number two is to provide suggestions, and then those suggestions will come back on the next agenda. And, uh, that's when you'll vote at that point to move the budget forward.
And these adjustments don't need to go back, don't need to go to a general session?
No.
They will be in the budget?
They will be considered part of the next budget moving forward.
We're recording, right?
Yeah, I just want to make sure the transparency's out there and that people understand that
The first item, the first item is in fact an action item. You've accepted and, uh, and, uh, placed into the budget the two-point and change million dollars. And then item number two is the one that provides, which a lot of you have already provided some, uh, some direction on, and, uh, and then we just have to have some agreement on that direction. And then we can add that to the next, uh, council meeting when you'll be, uh, either adopting or then not adopting the actual budget itself for the next two years.
All right, please vote.
Motion passed, again, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Item number two is the City Desert Hot Springs draft two-year budget and capital improvement projects for fiscal year 1819, 1920. Ms. Kelly?
I'm gonna introduce, uh, Mr. Andy Heath from Urban Futures. He'll be presenting the general fund, consolidated general fund.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor? Counsel, yeah, get on, okay. Uh, Andy Heath with Urban Futures, uh, fiscal consultant for the city. What we'd like to do for you today is actually go through and conduct a study session that will help better inform the budget process for fiscal 1819 and 1920 as it comes forward to your council for consideration in June, I believe June 5th. Uh, staff has gone through and looked at Oh, there we go, okay, just make sure I'm on, on the right track. Okay, what we're gonna be doing today is actually just talking about, uh, want something that's already been mentioned, which is a consolidated general fund and what that consolidated general fund is. Uh, it's basically comprised of your city's general fund, which is the largest fund, the operation, operational fund for the city. And also includes two other funds that receive the majority of their support from the general fund, uh, which are the health and wellness fund and of course, the public safety fund. Reason for putting those three funds together is because general fund receives all discretionary revenues in the city, which must fund required service levels that the city promulgates. So, uh, combining those funds and looking at them holistically as opposed to individually makes for a better budget processing on an annual basis. Then we'll go through, um, the consolidated general fund forecast, which actually informed the development of this year's budget that you'll be seeing partly today as part of the study session, and then more importantly, when it comes back to your council for approval on June 5th. This forecast was prepared as a seven-year forecast. Uh, it aligns with the CalPERS actuarial reports, which go out seven years and, and basically estimate the amount of cost that the city will have for both the normal costs and, more importantly, the unfunded liability. There are some issues with this, and we'll, we have a slide in this presentation to actually talk about that. But that's why the, the forecasts are set up on a seven-year basis. It looks at the, the cost drivers, the main cost drivers for the city, assumes all staff is, is currently, that the city currently has, remains in the future, um, and so forth, but we'll go through that. And then I'll turn it over to, um, Linda, who will actually go through a very short overview of some of the other funds in the city, the fiduciary funds, the special revenue funds, and the capital projects fund. And we'll turn it back over to your city council for any discussion or questions that you might have. Starting with the consolidated general fund, what I'll do is I'll take each fund incrementally and just give you a brief overview of what's going on over the next two years that's being presented. Uh, the general fund itself, just a core general fund, takes care of things like administration, which includes the city council, city manager, information technology, finance, human resources, risk management, the more administrative components of the general fund. Also includes community development, economic development, public works, and non-departmental. For fiscal 1819 and for fiscal 1920 in the two-year budget, you can see that revenues are about 15.2 million in the general fund and then drop to about 14.4 million in the general fund. Main cause of this is essentially due to the funding of the city hall reserve that's being set up in fiscal 1819 for about $700,000. That actually drops off in 1920, so that's why you see revenue going down, um, on that side. On the expenditure side, similarly, you'll see 9.7 million in expenditures and 8.4 million expenditures over the two-year period. And again, that has to do with the, with the city hall for the most part. Looking more generally, uh, at your general fund revenues, you can see there are five sources of revenue here that make up the majority of general fund revenues. Approximately 78 to 82% of the general fund revenues are received in property and related taxes, which are slated to go up, up 4.6% in the coming year and then 5% in the year after, 5% in the coming year and 4.6% in the year after, followed by dispensary and cultivation revenues. These revenues are a new source of revenue and increasingly new source of revenue to the city and are anticipated to be the second-largest general fund source of revenue for the coming year in fiscal 1819 and, and, and of course, in fiscal 1920. These revenues, as has previously, previously been mentioned, are estimated conservatively. The city did not take an aggressive approach to looking at these revenues and spent a considerable amount of time actually making sure these, that this estimate was conservative, um, looking at only those that are open at, right at this point. Uh, the, the facilities are open at this point moving forward. And actually built in a very small amount of revenue increase moving forward at 2% each year. So that's what you see there. Development and, and other related, uh, fees, building fees, building permits, grading permits and the such are the third-largest source of revenue you see there. Uh, we see a short, a small decrease going from fiscal 1819 to fiscal 1920. And that's because at some point in time, the, the hot development that's going on in Desert Hot Springs today will likely taper off a little bit. But just to remain conservative, uh, we want to, uh, build that into the model. Transit and occupancy taxes, large source of revenue as well, a 2% increase there. And then sales and use taxes make up the fifth largest and about a 1.5% increase there. Moving forward on the expenditure side, general fund expenditures. Uh, just a few things on the general fund expenditure side. Uh, you can see that the, there's a large, uh, category called non-departmental. What is in the non-departmental are actually the city hall costs that have been built in, that are being paid for by the general fund into the, uh, capital project, uh, fund for the city hall project itself. Uh, these are the transfers, and you'll see that in the coming year, there it's a lot larger than in fiscal 1920. And that's because you do have that one-time transfer, 1.275 million is actually going in fiscal 1819. Also in non-departmental, you have the unfunded liability for CalPERS. The unfunded actuarial accrued liability citywide is actually, uh, actually for the miscellaneous is incorporated in that category. Public safety portion, the safety portion of the unfunded liability is in the public safety fund. And then you, and then you also have the marijuana reserve being funded.
I'm sorry, where's the pension dropped in, the pension liability? Is that in the non-departmental?
Yeah, so the, in, in the non-departmental, you have the unfunded liability component payment. That's the annual fixed payment on an ongoing basis.
I'd like to see that split out. Thanks.
Okay. Let's see, some of the other expenditures, so in the city council, you have $170,000 built in for debris abatement each year. Uh, special projects, um, manager for the first year in the fiscal 1819 of 110,000 in the city manager's office. The unwinding of the put agreement is something that's gonna have to be considered in the near term. There's 100,000 built into the finance budget for that, and also a lobbyist for 72,000. In building and safety, you have the building inspector contract services, about 200,000 dollars for each year for that. Uh, general plan update, uh, 270,000 dollars in the, in the first fiscal year fiscal 1819 is built in. And then in economic development, the advertising budget is 76,000, increases 76,000 dollars for each year.
Increase, what is it now?
Sorry?
Increased by 76,000 or increased to 76,000?
76, I'm sorry, 76,000 for both
This is the total amount?
I believe that's what it is. Is that right?
Totally, in advertising for fiscal year 1890, it's 88,000 for both years.
Increases, increases by 76 from 12.
Would you like to know what is in there? Okay.
Okay, that's just a real brief snapshot of the general fund. Moving on to the health and wellness fund. Uh, the health and wellness fund covers, uh, programs in the aquatic center, Desert Hot Springs Recreation, uh, Health Center and the Community Health and Wellness Center as well. You can see that revenues in the general, in the health and wellness fund are about 627,000 in 1819, followed by 583,000 in 1920. Majority of this revenue does come from, uh, the general fund. A vast majority of this revenue is a transfer in. Expenditures, about 577,000, followed by 539,000. Health and wellness fund, uh, when looking at the consolidated general fund, all three funds combined only represents about 3% of the total. Some of the major revenues, as I, as I mentioned, is the transfer in from the general fund, about 490,000 and 439,000 in each of the two years in the budget. You also have a transfer in from the new market tax credit fund at 75,000 plus each year. And then a reimbursement of shared costs from Berego at 54,000. And then, of course, the major expenditures in that health and wellness fund are for the aquatic center, just over 275,000 each year. And the community health and wellness center are about 200,000 and 150,000 for the two-year budget. Moving on to the public safety fund. Public safety fund funds programs for police patrol and field operations, animal control, graffiti abatement, their fire services contracts is in the public safety fund and fire inspection. Uh, the public safety fund has revenues, uh, just about $5 million each of those two fiscal years. Uh, we'll go through what some of the major revenue sources are there. And you can see that there's expenditures of just over 10 million, almost 11 million in the second year of the budget, uh, in the public safety fund. The difference of this obviously comes from the general fund as a transfer each year. Looking at the major revenue sources, the transfer in from the general fund does make up the majority of what comes into the public safety fund at over 50%. 5.5 million and 5.8 million, uh, in the, in the two years of the budget. five million and five point eight million in the, in the two years of the budget. Public safety parcel tax makes up the second largest source of revenue, about two point four million a year. And then a utility users tax makes up just under two million dollars each year that comes into the public safety fund. Major expenditures, police patrol and field operations, about eight million dollars, just over eight million dollars each year. And then you have a fire services contract that's built in as part of that as well. Funding is provided for thirty-three FTE police officers and just built into this model is a two-point-five position, two-point-five FTE vacancy factor that's been, that's been presumed for, for the duration based on experience. One thing I wanted to mention, the public safety fund, and one of the cost drivers in the public safety fund is the CalPERS cost increases, where you have an increase of about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in the first year, over the current year, and then another increase of about eighty-nine thousand dollars moving into the second year. This includes both components of the CalPERS costs, but these CalPERS costs are segregated to the public safety fund and outside of the general fund as a whole for purposes of the safety, safety plan. So that's separate. Okay, so that is just a brief overview of the three funds in the consolidated funds, some of the things that are going on, some of the changes. What I'd like to do now is just spend a little bit of time on the consolidated general fund financial forecast. Again, this forecast was developed with all three funds considered as part of the consolidated general fund, general fund, health and wellness fund, and the public safety fund. Provides, the forecast provides for the two-year budget. So the two-year budget that you're seeing tonight was actually built within the forecast itself. And then in that third year of the forecast, it actually tries to extract all of the one-time stuff that's going on in the first two years so that you come up with a base. What does it take to run the city the way you run it today, based on that base forecast on an ongoing basis, both from a revenue perspective and from an expenditure perspective? So for the out five years of the model, all the way to twenty-four, twenty-five, that's been done. You have a base budget that's, that's available. Basically forecasts the ongoing level of funding that's presumed to be available to provide a defined array of services, which is the existing service level that you're going to be providing with the budget that's being presented to you tonight. This will serve as a guide to determine how service level adjustments and/or one-time costs impact future budgets. This model is very dynamic. It can anticipate any expenditure changes that may come down, any increases or decreases for that matter in revenue. And it's fluid, works all the way through the model and can be adjusted to, to account for that. So to the extent at some point in time in the future, there are questions about what something may mean in terms of a revenue or an expenditure augmentation or adjustment to this, to the city, this model can incorporate that. What this slide does is it actually goes through and shows what the revenues and expenditures are for the consolidated general fund, this is all three funds combined, for the seven years that are prepared in the model. So in fiscal eighteen, you see the budget, twenty point eight five million on revenue, in revenue, and then a twenty point four six million in expenditures. These are operating expenditures. What these expenditures don't include, is actually included as part of the forecast, is the contribution to the marijuana reserve. By policy, your council has designated that twenty-five percent of marijuana-related revenues go to a economic contingency reserve each year in the following year. So this doesn't account for that on that top line, only accounts for operating revenues. So you can see that where it says surplus deficit in the black number, you have a surplus or deficit every year from an operating perspective, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand in eighteen nineteen, all the way through twenty-four, twenty-five to five hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And again, this is for the two years that are being presented to you tonight, which have a lot of one-time things in them that you've heard about. And then those out years, twenty twenty-one through twenty-four, twenty-five, only include that base model. The economic contingency reserve is the amount that's in dark green there, where you see this is the amount that's actually being funded into an economic contingency reserve every year. This is increasing your fund balance or reserves every year by that amount. So for example, in eighteen nineteen, it's anticipated that three hundred and forty-nine thousand will be funded into the reserve into the following year. Nineteen twenty, similarly, seventeen, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, and then about seven hundred, seven hundred or so thousand for every year thereafter. And that's basically twenty-five percent of all the marijuana-related revenues. As you're funding this reserve, you're taking that out of your operating surplus or deficit. And that's why you see your net surplus or deficit positive in the first couple of years, consistent with the budget that's before you, and then red in, in the following fiscal years. That's because you're using operating money to fund the economic contingency reserve, which is, can be construed as a prudent thing to do. It is a way to set aside money specifically for a reserve. It's called out specifically in your audit as an economic contingency reserve, and you will have that. On the next slide, you'll see what the actual impact of this is to your consolidated general fund balance over time. So in fiscal seventeen eighteen, you can see your fund balance will be about five point four million dollars by the end of the year, drop a little bit because of the use of reserves for the, the city hall and actually putting that money aside for city hall to the extent it's needed, that will hopefully be paid back with development impact fees. And then it increases over time from there. And you can see these increases grow to, in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, to just over eight million dollars. The red bar, which represents the economic contingency reserve, that twenty-five percent of marijuana-related revenues, actually grows larger every year because you're assumed to be putting that aside and actually not spending that. So that amount actually begins to eclipse the amount that you have in unobligated fund balance because you have a small systemic operating issue, operating deficit, where you're taking some of that money, a lot of that money every year, seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, and funding that economic contingency reserve. Nonetheless, your reserves grow from five point four million in seventeen eighteen to just over eight million in, in twenty-four, twenty-five in this model.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Where is that money? Where is it sitting? Is it sitting in an interest-bearing account? Is it just in the general fund or are you taking it out and putting it somewhere?
Right now, the money that we've put aside, which is about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars through the year, June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, is sitting in a new consolidated fund, Fund Two Twelve. And the money that's being invested, it, it's, it's a part of all the money that's being invested, so it will receive interest based on its fund balance.
What's the interest rate?
It could be, I, I don't know what it's running, maybe two or three percent, depending on whether it's in life or in one of the investment accounts when we spread it. About one and a half percent.
It's better we're making money on that money than the state making money on that money.
One last slide before I turn it over to Linda to go through the special funds. CalPERS employer costs. What this graph shows is it shows the anticipated CalPERS employer costs for the consolidated general fund. This is both public safety and the miscellaneous plans over the next seven years. These numbers are taken directly from the actuarial reports that were made available in August of two thousand and seventeen. It's anticipated that these reports will be made available in August of two thousand and eighteen for the next seven years and will be updated accordingly. Couple of things going on in this slide. You can see that that orange bar, well, there's two bars there. There's a blue bar and an orange bar. That blue bar represents the normal costs. And these are the costs that basically are the costs that are incurred by the city for the existing employee base for it has to pay for future pensions. The orange bar, however, is, represents the amortized amount that must be paid by the city and every CalPERS, every jurisdiction that's in CalPERS for a period of time, which in this case right now is about thirty years, it's amortized like, like a home mortgage, to basically reduce that unfunded liability. The city is currently funded about sixty-eight percent for its full pension liability for both police and fire. The unfunded liability right now, as it stands, at the current discount rate, which is seven point three seven five percent, keeping in mind that CalPERS is lowering that discount rate over the next two years to seven percent. But the current unfunded liability is about eleven point one million dollars. Okay? So the city's pension funds are eleven point one million dollars underfunded, consistent with CalPERS methodologies in calculating exactly what that liability is. To the extent that discount rate or the rate that CalPERS assumes that it will earn on its portfolio reduces even more from seven point three seven five to seven or six, that liability goes up because basically they're not earning what they think they're going to earn or they're earning less than they originally anticipated. And it will move to twelve point nine million or eighteen point three million if it dropped to seven or to six percent. So you can see that there's a wide fluctuation here in, in how this discount rate plays into the unfunded liability for every jurisdiction. The orange bar is also going to change with the upcoming amortization or actuarial schedules that are coming out by CalPERS in a couple of months here. These orange bars are going to change to incorporate the policy change that CalPERS recently made, taking the amortization period from thirty years to twenty years. So essentially, what CalPERS has said is take your thirty-year mortgage, your home mortgage, or what's left on that thirty-year home mortgage, and take it down to twenty years and pay it over twenty years to get ahead of the game. This is in direct response to the fact that the CalPERS portfolio as a whole is between sixty-nine and seventy-one percent funded statewide, when you take all the jurisdictions combined and take the aggregate of that. This is obviously CalPERS response and ultimately, at some point in time, we will get those reports and these numbers will be updated. The numbers you see before you don't include those impacts just yet. On the other side of the table, I do want to say that over the last eighteen months, CalPERS has made in its portfolio approximately fourteen or fifteen percent. That's obviously more than the seven point three five, seven point three seven five percent that they have in their portfolio as a discount rate. But again, having said that, it's only for a short period of time and how it impacts longer-term assumptions remains to be seen as they build that into their portfolio. So this is, this is a, this is your real numbers. It accounts for all the staff that's currently in the city and these are right out of their reports, so these likely will transpire. And with that, I'll turn it over to Linda, who will go through the special funds.
Do we applaud now?
Again, the finance staff is also responsible for the preparation of all other, all other funds, of which there are approximately seventy-six. The other fund categories consist of fiduciary funds, special revenue funds, some of which are restricted, capital project funds, debt service funds, internal service funds, and grant funds. Fiduciary funds are used to account for resources held by the benefit of parties outside the government. In this two-year budget cycle, there are a total of nine such funds. They consist of the Desert Hot Springs Successor Agency, which is the former redevelopment agency, and various community facility districts. Expenditures include maintenance costs for all the community facility districts as well as debt service payments, property maintenance, and administrative costs for the successor agencies were, which were budgeted approximately eight point four million dollars. Special revenue funds are restricted to pay only for those costs associated with activities allowable under state, federal, and/or legal guidelines for each established fund. The city has a total of eighteen lighting maintenance districts, seventeen drainage assessment districts, which support all costs associated with each one of those districts. And those funds are budgeted for a two-year period at three million dollars. Other special revenue funds include measure A, gas tax, air quality, CSA one fifty-two and emergency preparedness. Again, these funds pay for road rehab, street maintenance, street sweeping, emergency and emergency supplies for fire. These budget, these funds are budgeted for two years at over two point eight million dollars. The development impact fees are in public places, off-street sidewalk funds and CDB funds will pay for a portion of costs for capital projects in the city through your CIP plan. And those are budgeted at over, just over, I'm sorry, just over four point million dollars. The supplemental law enforcement grant fund and vehicle abatement funds also pays for frontline services for the PD at about two hundred and twenty dollars, two hundred and twenty, yeah, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty dollars.
Thousand.
Thousand, geez Louise, I'm so sorry. I'll get it right my time.
Are you been looking at numbers for the last two weeks?
I think so.
What's going on?
The capital projects funds were created to account for financial resources to be used for the acquisition of, and for the construction of major capital facilities and infrastructure. In the next two-year budget cycle, there are a total of three of these funds budgeted totaling just a little over twelve million dollars. The cost will be for those improvements and also there is one fund, which is the two thousand and twelve street trip bond, which also is paying for a portion of the debt service, which is included in that twelve million dollars. Finally, the total expenditures for eighteen nineteen for other funds is twenty-two million five hundred and fifty-five oh eighty-four. And the total funding for nineteen twenty is sixteen million one sixty-two eight hundred and seventy-two, for a grand total in the two-year budget cycle of thirty, just over thirty-eight million dollars. And that concludes our presentation. And now Danny will be going over the CIP project.
Mr. Mayor, can we go over the projects at the next meeting? Because I think we're going to eat up all, all our time here.
I agree.
I got twenty-two minutes.
I would like to do that as well.
I can try to speed it up or I can come back.
We have no time for questions if we go into this presentation.
Yeah, that's fine. If the council's will is to just move this to the next meeting, we can do that. But we'll have to have a study session so we can give direction on those before the actual budget's adopted. How much time is the CIP, is this going to take?
Danny?
We have twenty-six projects. Majority of those are repeats from this year, so I don't, I don't see a lot of questions. I don't see a lot of new projects.
Could we do this? Could you, could you do as Linda did with the budget? Can we set meetings up with all the council members before the next, the next meeting so that we can all be confident in voting forward?
Yes.
That would work perfect.
We'll meet with your community development staff and go over these. And if there's any specific questions, we can bring them forth before the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And just also, they are in the packet, the presentation I was going to do today, and the entire budget is presented in a packet as well, so.
All right. With that, I'm going to start, I'll make a few comments. I only have three comments. The seven-year forecast, first of all, Urban Future's always been a great partner with the community, Desert, the city of Desert Hot Springs, and I thank you for the, the reports and everything you guys done. Thank you. You always support our staff very well. And when we have our private meetings, each council member's allotted time with our finance staff, I always feel very secure when I leave those meetings that you've given some great projections and, and conservative. The seven-year forecast moving forward, I think is very conservative. There could be a couple of years here in the future that we could see revenues skyrocket, but we don't know what's going to happen years after that and how it's going to balance out. So I think we're being very conservative. What I would like to see in the future is my employer employs a program for finance that makes it very easy to read. And what happens a lot of times in our treasurer's reports is that you list every item that's been paid for. And I know this has been a demand by the city council in the past, but to make it more easy for all of us, I think just a, one spreadsheet that shows each month's budget, the actuals, and then if there's a category that's negative or positive, that brings a red flag to the city council to go, why? And be able to look at those items. I think it'd be a lot more simple for all of us. And that's just a suggestion. I mean, the city manager can poll the council and see how they feel about that, but I think it'd be a lot more simple for all of us to be able to read that and even the public to be able to say, why'd they overexpend here? And then to see the budget each month go and those, and that category be whole, then it means nothing to anybody that you're spending within your budgeted amount and it doesn't, doesn't have to do anything. I'm in supportive of what Mr. Betts had brought forth when it comes to council, council members having a certain set of money for travel and, and, and whatever their, their things are, if they go to events, whatever it is. It makes it easier for everybody. It makes you work within a budget. I have no problem with that. Yeah.
Currently in the budget, we have a twenty-five thousand dollar line item for council travel and training. What I understand from Councilmember Betts is he wants that separated out individually for each council member. Is that what you're also saying?
Yeah, we had done, I think, like five thousand or something per year.
And we work out, you know, what we're anticipating doing. And I think Scott and I, one year at a contest, we were going to spend the least. We ended up helping other people who needed to spend more.
Okay. So yeah, if, if he's saying if I don't spend a thousand dollars towards the end of the fiscal year and someone else wants to travel a little more, it doesn't have a problem, you know, moving it over. you know, moving it over. The leave pay, I agree with Mr. McKee, there has to be some merit to it. We have to come up with a formula, and this is for the transparency of our constituents. Governments always beat up on how much they pay, and we need to have a system that we can say, this is the reason that our, we give this pay here, and however that, I'm not going to micromanage that. Human Resources could probably come up with an idea and make sure it all fits under state law. I think suggestions by Mr. McKee have already been made in Ms. Parks, so, yeah, however that works, I just think we need to justify when we're paying out or occurring, however that, accruing, however that is. But those are my comments. Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I'll try and keep this to five minutes, do you all a favor. So just want to, first thing is on DIF fees, and notice everyone, I just wanted to point out that those are dedicated to a specific use, and they have a nexus tied to them by law. I think there's something up in Sacramento on that. So for example, the Art in Public Places Fund can only be used for art in public places expenditures. There was some conversation at CCAC that thought, well, heck, since that money's there, let's just use it. Economic development, I don't consider advertising to be economic development, and I understand you're just giving an explanation of that, but furthering the discussion, I would like to see we get some kind of targeted result of what we want to see happen, and then come up with, you know, like maybe the desired result would be more retail, more TOT, more economic activity, and that we figure out what it's going to cost to actually get something done, and I don't know if it requires Urban Futures to go, give us some kind of number. Says if you spend this much on retail, economic development, you'll get this kind of return and this kind of result. It's the same thing as if you're sending your salesman out to go get you more sales, he's got to have marketing money behind him to get that done. So I'd like to see some serious number developed, put that into the budget, where we can get some results in some of these other areas, and then the return is obviously the numbers, income on these other areas goes up. And I would like to get into this budget, budgeting for additional public safety targets. I already mentioned what those were. Happy to have the mayor agreeing with me on council budget, travel budget. Just save, just, oh, disaster preparedness. I'd like to see some assessment for needs. We'd obviously have to budget that, because we've got to study what that is, and then act to have a stockpile of non-perishable items. Bonuses I don't agree with. They're too problematic. You have to set benchmarks, then it becomes, is it too easy a benchmark? And as I've, we had things like that going on for city manager before. It was such a difficult task, and it bogged us down so much. I just don't like bonuses to be, for how problematic it becomes in a public agency. And then I'd like to try and use cash in the bank to achieve better gains than we're getting with money just sitting in the bank drawing interest, and this may be something we do during the day and not something, during the year, not something we budget, but right now, I think we decided we're going to pay, we're going to lease police cars, and that has an interest rate of what, seven percent? Or whatever it was? And we've got two hundred and fifty thousand sitting in the bank. We just go make a loan for those police cars to ourselves, save, I think we were going to save thirty-five or fifty thousand dollars in interest over the life of that lease, which is better return than we're getting on the money just sitting in the bank. I guess the point is, we could probably figure, we could do a little better if we just make a loan to ourself, rather than me going to, you know, it's like when I pay off a credit card, it's got a fourteen percent interest rate. I just made a fourteen percent loan to myself, and as long as we got the cash flow to not get ourselves in trouble, we need to start looking at that. And capital improvements fund, I think we have a whole lot more than needed. I'm glad we pushed that off, because I want to see that as a, there's way more in the city we need to do that isn't getting done. And the last thing I want to say is, as I look at what we're, you know, going over the budget presentation, when we were in the middle of the financial crunch, we saw something like the Aquatic Center, the Senior Center, or whatever it was, we're looking at it, it's, oh my gosh, this is a problem. We don't have enough money to pay for this, and those were horrible, horrible times. Every budget item you look at was, oh my God, can we cut this? Who's going to be stepping up this podium saying, please don't cut this budget? We're not in those times now, but let's not get too, you know, let's not go spending hog wild and get ourselves back into that. This is, it's much better now. I'm happy, everything's great, let's just keep it that way. That's all I got to say, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McKee?
Real quick, a question for the chief. I never get to ask the chief any questions. Somebody will throw one at you right now. If you look at other agencies in the valley, they're significantly more non-sworn than we have. In other words, in Palm Springs, which is a bad example, I know, they have about a hundred sworn and about forty-five non-sworn. Are we in a position that we've got, I know that we've got like thirty-three sworn, but I think we only have five to eight non-sworn? Are we still in that circumstance? Or do we have more than that now?
We might have a little more than that, but I've also been in discussions with the city manager about some future things that we can do to build up staff, like, that were suggested that would not incur the cost of a sworn officer.
Good enough. The second thing I'd like to talk about, again, is CalPERS. You talked in terms of us being at sixty-eight percent, and the last time I heard at SCAG, the median average was sixty-six percent for most cities, so we're a little bit above that. And the question I have is, if we have a ten million dollar unfunded liability, there's almost ten million dollars listed in this chart. Even if we were in a position that it was at a twenty-year amortization, I would expect that that doesn't work, as far as me calculating things here. In effect, we're going to be paying significantly more than even double what that ten million dollar liability would be.
I can respond to that. One of the things that CalPERS does do when they're computing how much that amortization payment's going to be every year is they do a ramp-up, and they do a straight line and then a ramp-down. Many of the components of the unfunded liability that you see in the first few years right there are part of that ramp-up, so it's not a straight-line amortization, it's a ramp-up.
Well, that's very nice of them.
Yeah.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, I have nobody else in the queue. You've got directions, Mr. City Manager? All right, we'll see this item back on the fifth of June for approval by the city council or not. I can't see the future. At this time, we are going to recess until six o'clock regular session.
And again, I'd like to thank the staff. I know that this is a big deal, doing a two-year budget, but it does help everyone the following year, so thank you.
Absolutely. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to get started. All council members are present, and we're going to call this meeting to order the City of Desert Hot Springs regular meeting of the city council, and the city council serving as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency board for May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. This is a six P M. regular session here at the Carl May Center here in Desert Hot Springs. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Present.
Councilmember McKee?
Present.
Councilmember Parks?
Here.
Mayor Protem Zavala?
Present.
And Mayor Mattis.
Present. Is there anybody who would like to give an invocation on the council tonight? Anybody in the audience like to give an invocation? I see no one coming forth. We'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, troop sixteen oh six will present the colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good.
Yes.
Thank you, troop sixteen oh six. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. At this time, the city council may amend the order of the agenda, approve the consent calendar in whole, remove items from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action, and add urgency items. Is there anybody who would like to speak on an item that's on the consent calendar tonight? I see nobody coming forth. I'll move to a motion by the city council.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second to approve the agenda and approve the consent calendar in whole. Please vote. At this time, we'll move on to public comments. At this time, pursuant to the Brown Act, any persons may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda. That means if you're speaking to the city council in this section, we cannot have a back-and-forth conversation. City council, all comments are to be directed to the city council, and shall be devoid of personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. If you haven't filled out a speaker card, please do in the back. They're right there on the back table. Thank you very much. Got a handful. We'll start with Gary Gardner, followed by Judy Shea.
Good evening, council members. Gary Gardner, member of the Planning Commission, with our Planning Commission report for this month. The Planning Commission held its regular meeting last week, had a couple of items of note that I wanted to report on. We had two minor changes to existing CUPs for cannabis growing and manufacturing operations, and approved a slight variance to assign ordinance, and approved a possibly significant change to an existing ordinance, as I'll touch on here in just a sec. As the city adopted its current business model for the regulated cannabis industry, it developed ordinances from scratch, pretty much. Over time, it's clear some of those have become overly burdensome and need some streamlining. The council approved, or the commission, rather, I said, approved amending chapter seventeen dot one eighty to allow for more administrative approvals for certain minor entitlements and creating more streamlined process for already-approved entitlements in good standing with the city. For example, one of the items that was before the commission, our last meeting, was an amendment to a CUP to change the designation of one room in an already-approved cannabis cultivation facility from storage and packaging to distribution. That took an entire report by the staff and a vote by the council and on from there, or from the commission. So having minor changes such as that for existing projects like this be handled at the administrative staff level rather than come before the commission will certainly be more timely for our applicants, which changes can be approved and not have to wait a month before it come before the full planning commission and to improve the business climate in the city. The commission approved the changes on a four-to-o vote with one absent commissioner, and we'd recommend the full city council adopt those changes when they come before you. Lastly, I just want to remind you and the audience of the town hall for the updating of the citywide general plan. We encourage everyone to attend and participate with the Planning Commission and the planning staff, give input into updating the city plan. That'll be here at the Carl May Center on Wednesday, May thirtieth, from five to seven P M. And that concludes our report for the month. Questions? But I don't think I can take any.
Not tonight. Thank you, Gary, so much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, if I may interrupt just for clarification purposes, any ordinance that goes before the Planning Commission would just be a recommendation to the city council. So at the Planning Commission level, it's merely a recommendation, those ordinances, if and when they come before, the city council will be the final action.
Thank you. Judy Shea, followed by Nina Duarte.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, hello there. Well, that sounds better. Anyway, I thought I was short of breath. The Senior Center is going to have their spring fling this Friday. It's going to be fabulous. They're going to be all dressed up. There's a king and a queen, and thank God, we got some nice donations. They're going to have little trinkets, and, oh, if you have time, come by and see. It's one to four, and if anybody wants to make any donations, a late donation is okay to help the seniors have a wonderful time. You'd have to take it there, because I'm going to go to the Elks Convention in San Diego, and I hope to go soak in some hot water and swim a little bit. That'd be different. Anyway, Veteran Center is coming along nicely, and there seems to be some little bit of quirks on how they go about getting people in and referring them and making assessments. It's kind of very confusing even for me, and that's not usually, you know, you've got Homeless Connect, you've got Lighthouse Social Services, you have Path of Life, you have all these people involved in this, and the assessment takes weeks, maybe even months. I had one man, it took two months. Most of the time, he spent in hospital, a veteran. Anyway, we're going to have the grand opening on the thirty-first of this month at ten o'clock, and you're all welcome to come. Manny Perez is going to cut the ribbon, and we'd appreciate it if, and I just found out he was going to do it. You know, we talked a little bit, Craig Rodriguez, Anaya Lee, and so forth, and he did give me a little, I mean, a nice grant to help with the center, with the utilities and rent and so forth. So we really, really appreciate that as well. You know, it's not that I'm short of breath, but it's, you know, I'm trying to relax a little bit since I'm going to go away tomorrow, you know, and kind of like, this weekend was so wonderful with my three sons, my grandson and my daughter-in-law. They came and they did all my yard work. I can actually see the desert now. I could see the mountains, but I couldn't see the desert with the oleanders two stories high. And then they found a main line that was broken. I said, I got this little leak. No, it had to be a main line, but my son had a business since nineteen eighty-four doing landscaping and all that stuff. He fixed it, so now it's not leaking anymore. Anyway, it's been, it's a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Nina Duarte, followed by Mike Bacardi.
Good evening, Mayor Mattis, council, and all here. I came here especially to do an invite for an upcoming event, but before I do that, I wanted to share with you, and councilwoman Anaya Lee Zavala, Mayor Protem, was there last night for the recipients of the Women's Desert Hot Springs Women's Club last night at Miracle Springs. And when I sat through the interviews for the scholarships, they put a box of Kleenex, and I said, you know, I've been doing this for a number of years. Why is there a box of Kleenex? They told me you're going to need it by the end, and especially when it comes time to pick the recipients. Well, to make it short, the six recipients that received this award of twenty-five hundred dollars, which is going to be matched by another entity in Coachella Valley, Future One?
One Future.
One Future, I'm sorry. Now they're going to be receiving five thousand dollars, but what he mentioned to all of us was that the point, GPA point average of all these students combined is a four-point eleven. That's what we're producing here in Desert Hot Springs. So I really wanted to share that, so thank you for allowing me to do that. Okay, earthquake and emergency preparedness seminar. We've postponed it in the past. We needed to find another location that would be more accommodating to the number of guests that we would like to, that we would like to have, and it's going to happen on June ninth, from nine in the morning to noon. Nine to ten, free continental breakfast, two hundred safety kits for the first two hundred families that arrive, and it's basically going to be learn, plan, and be ready. We have twelve guest speakers, authorities, both state and local entities that are going to be there to let us know what is available to us in case of a disaster, or more or less how to prepare for a disaster. I don't know that any of us are going to be ever ready or prepared, but this is going to be a learning experience, not just for myself, but for all those that are planning on attending. We are going to have childcare. We're going to have vendors, and thank you to the police chief as well as the fire department. We are going to have vehicles out there so that the little ones that are going to be separated from the adults will get not only training as far as safety is concerned, but they're also going to be able to view the vehicles. Anyway, we anticipate a great turnout, June ninth, at the high school in Desert Hot Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Bacardi, followed by Ted Meyerhoppin.
We're going to have vendors, and thank you to the police chief as well as the fire department. We are going to have vehicles out there so that the little ones that are going to be separated from the adults will get not only training as far as safety is concerned, but they're also going to be able to view the vehicles. Anyway, we anticipate a great turnout, June ninth, at the high school in Desert Hot Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Bacardi, followed by Ted Meyerhoffen.
Good evening, mayor, council staff, citizens. My name is Mike Bacardi. I have a couple of announcements, and then I need to address the council. This weekend, Saturday, is the last day for the Friends of the Bookstore, Friends of the Library Bookstore. We're open from ten to three. Large selection of books for your summer reading. The address is six-six-five-eight-oh, Eighth Street. Come in and get your great deal, and we're going to reopen this Saturday after Labor Day. Next announcement, the first in the Jammin' in the Desert Outdoor Concerts is June fifteenth, featuring radio-approved hip-hop and rap at Todesco Park from five to nine. These will be held every third Friday of June, July, August, and September. Enough of my announcements, I need to address the council. I would like to ask the council to put funding for our library on a future agenda item soon to seriously look at helping to pay for the library, our existing and expanding city needs. We have been told again that we are getting a free library from the county at fifteen-thousand square feet. We are told to be happy and satisfied with this free library. I am extremely happy, as is everyone else who cares about our seniors, our youth, our students, and our community, but I am not satisfied. Excuse me, I just lost my place. Let me explain why I am not satisfied. Many of the libraries in our county system have had new libraries, remodels, and expansion in the forty-six years since our library has been built. Think about that. This building has stood for forty-six years while other libraries have been expanded, remodeled, and rebuilt by the county. For a couple of examples, Cathedral City has two new libraries. This is all in the last forty-six years. Cathedral City has two new libraries, three if you count the remodel after their fire. La Quinta has three new libraries plus an expansion. Sun City and Manife, they actually have two libraries, have seven expansions on new, or new facilities, and one is being remodeled right now for an eighth. And one last one, Temecula, two new libraries and one remodeled, all while DHS is forced to use a forty-six-year-old building and get hand-me-down furniture from other libraries that are being remodeled. Sorry, I'm getting a little bit angry about this. We are again promised a new library at fifteen-thousand square feet, which is inadequate for our city. We are told, oh, you can have more, you just need to pay for it. How do we pay for it? Does the city come forward with the plus six million dollars we may need for an extra ten thousand square feet? Where does the money come from? One last quick question. The county budget is in arrears of over three-hundred million dollars. They have a county jail they cannot fund. I want to guarantee that we are getting the library, or is our money going to be taken away again and used for other purposes? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bacardi. It's not angry, it's passion. Ted Meyerhoffen, followed by, I have three speakers for COD. I'll introduce you as one, and you can come up and decide who goes first and go from there, okay?
Ted Meyerhoffen, Desert Hot Springs, Mayor Mattis, and city staff. First of all, I'd like to wish Councilmember Parks well. I know she was a Parks Commissioner at one time, a planning commissioner, a council member, a mayor, and a council member again, and I may be...
You're going to be here all night with all her titles.
I may be missing a few. I was getting, maybe missing a few, so I'll stop. But thank you very much, Councilmember Parks, for your service to the community, and good luck to you. I was looking today, had some information, and I believe it was Santa Barbara Law College put some information out that sports gaming is legal now.
Not in California.
Crossed, isn't that something? So what does that mean for our city?
Not in California.
Anything.
It's not in California?
No.
That's it, huh?
Well, I mean, you can say whatever you want.
Don't worry, no, no. I'm looking for ways the city can make my, I thought, well, we already had gaming here before, why not bring it in and get on with the program? So there are other ways that the city, and you know, Mayor Mattis, I'm kind of passionate about folks using their homes to be able to do businesses and stuff in, and it really doesn't have anything to do with horticulture, what the other rest of the folks here in the city could do. And I know that our Mayor Protem here has actually went out and made microloans, and there's other things going on for small businesses, like in-home kitchens and stuff, and I would really like to see some of this stuff come to Desert Hot Springs. If the economy is getting better, then now's a good time to start a small business, and the more our residents make, the better the city is financially. So I'm going to continue to look for other things, other avenues, just in my personal time, when I see things come up that maybe the city might be able to incorporate for the citizens to start small businesses and make more money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My last three speakers, Deliana, Scott, and Annabelle. I'll let you introduce yourselves. You each have three minutes, so however you choose to use that.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Mattis, Mayor Protem Savala, city council members, city council staff, and guests. My name is Dr. Annabelle Neri. I'm the Vice President of Student Success, and I'm here on behalf of Dr. Joel Kineman, Superintendent President and the Board of Trustees of College of the Desert. We are committed to education to all ends of our valley. So under Dr. Kineman's leadership and the board members, we are creating dedicated teams so we can have regular presence at the city and community councils and provide regular updates or be available to answer any questions regarding education and the opportunity for partnerships. So your West Valley team includes myself as the executive member, and then it also includes Dr. Scott Atkins, the Director of Education Centers for the West Valley, and Dr. Deliana Pedegrino-Cutz, who is the Director of Talent Search, and they prepared some comments for you. Thank you.
Good evening. As many of you are aware, this year, the College of the Desert is celebrating the sixtieth year of our founding. For the past sixty years, we've created a lot of memories, partnerships, and have expanded beyond our dreams. In addition to our Palm Desert campus, we now serve our students in multiple locations across the Coachella Valley, Indio, Mecca Thermal, Desert Hot Springs, which is right back here, and our newest location in Palm Springs. We also have various locations in high schools across the valley, I think including eight. So this afternoon, it gives us great pleasure to highlight and share some of our recent accomplishments and about your community college.
So first, College of the Desert now serves over fifteen-thousand students across our campus sites every academic year, in addition to working with our extended community to promote college access and success. Last year, COD received a federal grant to launch the Trio Educational Talent Search Program, which is an outreach program that promotes college access to five hundred students who will be the first in their families to attend college enrolled in three schools in Desert Hot Springs. Desert Hot Springs High School, Painton Hills Middle School, and Desert Springs Middle School. We also serve students enrolled in DHS and other high schools in the Coachella Valley through our Trio Upper Bound Program, which provides academic support to high-achieving high school students who are also going to be the first in their family to attend college. We are also pleased to announce that students graduating from the high schools in the Coachella Valley in two thousand and eighteen are eligible for our pledge program, which offers two free years of tuition at College of the Desert, in addition to receiving wraparound services for student success. As a result of our outreach efforts, it comes to no surprise that with the implementation of our pledge program, our Edge program has also grown and now serves more than twelve-hundred students annually. This popular program received national acclaim this past January, being honored with a two-thousand-and-eighteen Bellwether Award, symbolizing Edge as one of the most innovative initiatives among more than one thousand community colleges across the nation.
Our national recognition did not stop there. College of the Desert has been named a finalist for the two thousand and nineteen Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence, meaning and marking the College of the Desert status as one of the top community colleges in the United States. Lastly, this May, College of the Desert will set yet another record by graduating the largest class in our history for the third year in a row. We are pleased to see our students graduating, transferring, and of course, entering the workforce. Your students are our students, and it is our honor and pleasure to serve them. On behalf of your community college, thank you for the opportunity to share our story.
Thank you, and what I'd like to do in the future is so that we can have a back-and-forth discussion with the councils, I'll schedule you guys your presentation. We do presentations at five-thirty, and I'll schedule you, maybe quarterly, that you could do that, and we could have a back-and-forth conversation.
We'd love that.
Thank you very much. If nobody else in the public comments section, is there anybody that would like to speak in public comments tonight? I see no one out. I will close public comments at this time. Move on to the city manager's report.
Danny, can you speak a little bit to the locations that have been approved through the traffic engineering survey on the upcoming grant signaling and pedestrian safety?
Yes, as part of the Palm Drive Traffic Signals and Lighting Project, we analyzed five different traffic signals where the traffic signal warrant analysis was completed. The traffic signal warrant analysis took in the geometry, the traffic accidents, the existing conditions and future conditions, and it made recommendations as to where and if a traffic signal was warranted. Based on that, on that study which we've, we received last week, there are following locations that were warranted. There was one on Pearson and Choya, which is over here near the high school across from the Old City Hall, that was warranted for the traffic signal. There was Pearson and Desert View, which was also warranted for a traffic signal. That is the median between Palm and Pearson and Palm and Ironwood, and there was another one for Palm and Camino Aventura. So we have a total of three intersections that were warranted for traffic signals out of the five. We are continuing to move forward with the engineering design, which will be the geometrics, the medians, the different ADA ramps on each corner, and so forth. But that does, that does signify that we do have three that we're moving forward. Thank you.
Could you, I was going to ask a question too, since we're on this item, Mr. Porres, the Camino Aventura one has been folded into the current STIP grant, so that construction will start immediately?
Yes, we're proceeding with that one as a priority.
Mr. McKee?
Yes, I'm just surprised that Buena Vista and Palm did not make it. And could you explain to me, considering the number of deaths and accidents we've had there?
I believe the study, when it analyzed Buena Vista, Flora, because with the study that analyzed Flora, Desert View, it all compiled into the nearest one, which was Desert View, was also analyzed, which the left turn movements and the existing pedestrian crossings, it was, and the proximity to all the other traffic signals, Desert View is the one that warranted most of them. There are some improvements for Buena Vista that would limit some traffic. Some of those include moving the bus stop south closer to Desert View, also extending the median to limit some of the left turn movements, which will prevent some left turn conflicts.
Thank you.
Any other, anything else, Mayor?
And then Chief Moore and Chief Brooks were unable to be here tonight. Chief, could you introduce yourself real quickly to the city council? And he will be here tonight to answer any questions in reference to our fire contract. Chief?
Yes, so my name is John Cortez. I'm a battalion chief in the West Desert Battalion Twelve, Palm Desert Ranch in Rajan, Indian Wells. So we feel in for each other. That's that whole integrated cooperative piece. So I'm here tonight to help, answer any questions that I can as we move forward. So, yeah, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Chief. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Move on to mayor and council member comments. Who wants to go first tonight? Mr. McKee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really quickly, we've had multiple budget meetings over the last couple of weeks. I think the staff is sick of us right now, so I appreciate their patience. I participated with Coachella Valley Housing in a discussion and really a speech-making event that took place in Palm Springs, dealing with the housing shortage we have in the state. I discussed some issues with MIG as far as the general plan, putting forth what I believe should happen, as, as has been announced here by Gary. This is a big deal. People from the city will be asked to participate in citizens' forums as far as the general plan is concerned. This is going to set our course for decades, so it is very important for people to attend. I also attended the animal campus meeting. One of the interesting things about it is just, off the cuff, I'm not dying yet, off the cuff, the number of animals that are being taken to the animal campus looks like it's reducing significantly. I think that that's a really good indication that our new animal program is working properly, that we're trying to get the animals back to owners, that we're trying to find nonprofits to adopt them, so I'm really happy with that. I attended a meeting at Painton Hills Middle School that mostly was dealing with the Rancho de Oro issues. And finally today, my friend, Anaya Lee, to my left, forced me to almost destroy my car driving up and down the road at Mission Creek Preserve. That's all I have.
Mr., Ms. Savala?
I had a meeting with the mayor and a few other people regarding the Police Activities League. I also attended the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition Affordable Housing Event along with Joe. I attended the Desert Hot Springs Women's Club Scholarship Ceremony last night, which is, was a fantastic event, and, you know, we were able to see our young kids going off and doing bigger and greater things, and it's exciting to see. And then I also had a Coachella Valley Conservation Commission meeting, more about French-toed lizards and purchasing property for conservation. It's always, it's always the same. And then I also had the privilege of sitting on a policy panel for UC Riverside. They have a master's in public policy, and I was asked to sit on a panel and speak about policy in the city. So that was, that was a great event as well. I also had a microloan board meeting. Somebody mentioned something about it earlier. That's Joe's baby. I'm on the board, but Joe is the orchestrator of it.
But Anaya Lee's going to be taking it over soon, so that's, that's not a big deal.
And then I also had a Long Canyon Trail Meeting, and yes, luckily though, Danny gave me a ride, so I didn't have to drive my Accord through the, through the preserve, but I have in the past. And then just one comment regarding the library. It's not that the county is saying, you're getting this library, be happy with it. This is what, this is what the county can afford. Much like the city, they also have a budget that, and when, when that does move forward, once those RFPs, as I mentioned in my email to you, come forward, and once they've reviewed the developer teams, and that goes forward to the Board of Supervisors, they will all have to vote on it, okay, in order for it to move forward. Now, you, you listed, and, and, and so long as it's within the budget that they have, then it should be good to go. Now, when you talked about all the various other, you know, libraries that have been built or not built, I, I do not have the ability right now to look up that information for you right off the bat and tell you what was the history behind that. But I know you're upset that the county hasn't done anything in regards to the library for many years, and I'm upset about that, too, because I was one of those kids that couldn't come to this library because they didn't have a dedicated reading area for kids, and I didn't like their teen selection of books. But for the first time, the county is doing something to help us expand our library, and we're going to triple the size of the library. And it's not like we're going to be adding on to an existing building. It's going to be a brand-new building with a dedicated area for kids, and I'm excited about that because our kids will have the ability to do that now. It'll have a conference room that'll hold two hundred people and two study rooms, and it'll have an opportunity room as well, and we'll be able to work with that as, 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 you know, we wish and how, and how we want to use it. But I, I just want to make sure that, that we all know here that there is progress being made for the first time in a very long time. And, and I would, I would like it if, as a, as a community, we'd kind of come together as opposed to approaching this in a way where, you know, we're upset about it not being the square footage that, you know, we want it to be. And, and, and I understand, and I understand that, you know, we'd, we'd like it to be bigger. I'd love for it to be bigger as well, but I also understand that there are budgetary constraints, and I understand that the Board of Supervisors have a fiduciary responsibility to the public as well. And, you know, as far as the city, you know, setting funds aside to collaborate with the county on perhaps creating a bigger library, I'm all for that, you know? We're in, we're in the process of looking at our budget. I'm not sure how much we could afford because it's absolutely correct, we cannot afford to build a new library on our own. We would have done that a long time ago. But, you know, if we're, as a council, willing to dig into the budget and see where it might fit, then that's fantastic. I, I would love that. I don't know whether or not it would work with our existing, you know, budget, but... I don't know whether or not it would work with our existing, you know, budget, but, but we're working on things. And, and, and the county, I think, is trying, they're working with us well, and I, that's, that's really all I have to say. I think it's a fantastic thing that we're gonna be getting a brand-new library.
Mr. Betts? Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll throw my applause on that one. That was good. Okay, so to the public, there's a call for capital projects, which means we're gonna be approving at a future meeting coming up, different things you wanna see around the city. And our engineers have gone through and identified areas, imagine road widensings or whatever else. So if there's something that you see that you think is particularly needy, I don't know if we can fund them all. It takes a while. These lists have been around for a while, but this is your opportunity. We just covered that, and we're gonna cover that in the next council meeting and a study session, right, Mr. Mayor? So show up for that one and offer your two cents or two million, whichever it is you so choose. We also had a good study session. I encourage you to go review the meeting, so we don't have to go through that entire study session again through my comments here, but I thought that was a very good session with the council. And of course, staff's done a good job putting the budget together. The takeaway is that it's a whole lot easier putting a budget together when you have money than when you're in those dire financial straits as we were before. So the council's done a really good job getting things straightened up. I attended the meeting with the consultant, MIG, on the general plan update. Council got their chance to offer our two cents worth. Now the public's opportunity is coming up, has been announced. Please attend that. You get to shape the history of this city. You get to help shape the history of this city for the next 20 years. And it's a plan we all come together, agree on, and it offers the blueprint for how we're gonna look. Met with Urban Futures, had multiple budget meetings, staff, so going over all that and put this one together. Attended the SEVAG Public Safety, is a real good discussion on what probation department is doing to help parolees. It's, people are coming out of prison, and they're out of the jail, whatever, and they're having a hard time. They've, and so probation is dedicated to trying to give them a chance to not go through the cycle and come back out as a, you know, a new parolee or on probation. So that was a good presentation. Attended the League of California Cities last night in Palm Springs, had a long, long presentation on the pension crisis, and I think the presentation was as long as the problem is big, so they, they really got into it. It was a little too much detail, actually. And then attended the Airport Land Use Commission. And the only thing close to home was a project in Cathedral City, some housing down near the airport. I do wanna mention one thing. I was at the Airport Land Use Commission, this was months ago, and I go into the room, and usually we meet and have a little coffee or something before the meeting starts, and when there's all the rest of the commissioners and staff, and, and first thing I walk in, somebody says, "Congratulations." I said, "Well, congratulations for what?" And they said, "Oh, you got a new library. And you're one of three." And, you know, you think I'm making this up, this is the God's honest truth. You put a Bible in front of me, and I'll tell ya, that's exactly what happened. They said, "You guys are one of three to get a library." There's only three cities in all of Riverside County. And I didn't hear anybody say, "Oh, well, you're getting a little wimpy 15,000-square-foot library," because it ain't a wimpy 15,000-square-foot library. And the way this thing's gonna be designed, it can easily be added on to, but I just wanna say that I am so appreciative of the attention that we're getting out of Riverside County right now with getting a library. And darn, I sure hope the message out of this community is, "Thank you very much," and not, geez, well, that's not big enough. I, that, to me, is a very bad message to be sending to supervisors, and we wanna encourage them to look upon Desert Hot Springs as, and, and I know some of these signals got to them, where I had a call saying, "Hey, you guys aren't happy with this?" And I said, "No, no, no, everybody's happy." Well, almost everybody's happy. So anyhow, let's encourage this, let's embrace this. This is a great thing, and we got a, we got a very variable, wonderful, new, brand-new construction, multimillion-dollar project coming, and that's wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Yes, Ms. Parks?
Thank you. Okay. First thing I did since our last meeting was attended the Historical Society Board Meeting. And the soup supper that they had previously to that meeting, I understand, was quite good, and they learned a lot about our cannabis industry. And I, that was the first soup supper that I have missed in seven years.
You missed it?
I missed it. I had another very, very important meeting I had to go to, had no choice. So, anyway, congratulations, Greta, you did a good job. On the 5th of May, at the Classic Club, we had the Day of Hope, which I'm on the board at the Seruptimus House of Hope, which is a recovery substance abuse for women. And this is a fundraiser, we have one a year. We finally decided to take it outside the city, took it to the Classic Club. We have always struggled, struggled to get 100 people to attend here in Desert Hot Springs. We had 'em coming from all over the valley to the Classic Club. We were sold out before we knew it. In fact, we were taking seats from other people, and, just to make our count. So, anyway, it was wonderful. We made a good amount of money for the House of Hope, which is a great organization. The success is like 97 or 98% success. Every Christmas, they have a reunion, and the graduating girls come back as women with 28 years of sobriety, 15 years of sobriety, some of 'em just six months, but they come back and say that this, this house saved their lives. And I'm proud to be a part of it. On the 9th, I attended the Airport Commission. And one of the things is that United Airlines on December 19th will be starting a non-stop flight to New Jersey Airport. And the reason Newark, it's, the reason it's there is because that is a hub, one of the largest hubs on the East Coast, that takes you to the, you know, to Europe and to the Asia, anywhere, anywhere you wanna go. So it's non-stop from here to there, and then from there, you go from wherever. So it's great for Palm Springs, and it's competition for JetBlue. JetBlue goes to New York non-stop. I took their first flight. It was wonderful. My, my sister-in-law, myself, and my daughter went to New York. Airfare and accommodations for four days per person was $475. Can you believe that? I mean, because not only the airfare, but then they put us up in, JetBlue, you know, was part of the package, put us up in a Marriott in New York. And it was, anyway, take advantage of it. It's right out of Palm Springs, easy to park. On the 10th of May, I attended the Energy and Environment Commission, which is part of the Coachella Valley Association of Governments. I can't recall if there was anything specific, but again, my, my iPad, I think, I'd be glad to turn it in, 'cause it's not worth, anyway. It wouldn't open up again tonight. So I had all my notes written and everything, and I went to my notes, and they're erased. So anyway, I, I know that there was something on ED, but I can't remember what it was.
Some of us are using the high-tech method here, okay, you know?
A paper. 907 pages of paper, no thank you. Anyway, on the 14th, last, last night, we all attended the League of California Cities. I'm a regular there, I'm on the City Select Committee. And we re-elected Russell Betts to the Land Use Airport Commission. And of course, I lost my seat on LAFCO because I won't be around. I thought, "Well, if you could just keep me on until, until I'm, you know, I'm replaced." But no, they said, "No, because we'd have to have a special meeting," and da-da-da-da-da. So I said, "Okay." So they replaced me with Steve Sanchez, who's a nice councilman in La Quinta. And I thought that presentation there on the, the Pers liabilities was informative, but I think we've got it all over, that presentation. What we're doing here in Desert Hot Springs makes them look like they don't know what they're doing. Seriously, we've got, we're on top of it. We're on top of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I attended most of the budget meetings as everybody else has, so I've been doing a lot of budgeting right now. And then for those of you very interested in budget, we just had our study session tonight, and then on June 5th, the city council will ratify the budget for the next fiscal year. Junior ROTC program, if you have never seen this program in, in works, it's just amazing what our high school has done for the last, I can't even remember how many years. I had some notes written on the pamphlet that they gave us at the graduation ceremony, and I, I left them at home, unfortunately. There's over 100 kids involved in the junior ROTC here in Desert Hot Springs. It's one of the most awarded programs in the country. They, their drill team is excellent. We grad, they graduate, we, I was, I'm not part of it. They graduated 17, I believe, students this year that are going to college, and six that are going directly into the military. There was one gentleman who was graduating high school, and two days after he graduates, he's heading to boot camp. So it was just, it was heartwarming to see this program in effect in our community because of the structure that they have. And I have two stepdaughters that are moving on to high, one's moving on to high school this year, and another one moving on the following year, and they're already recruiting down in the junior, junior highs, that's how old I am, middle schools, and, and bringing those kids up. So it's just an amazing program. I was fortunate enough to be asked as mayor, and the previous mayors have also given awards or recognitions to the kids that are going off to the military, and so I was able to do that to six of them the other night. Multiple organizations came up from all over the valley. There must've been 20 different presentations. And then the awards that they were presented to the principal of the high school for what they did in drill competitions and everything, which is amazing. I also attended the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Transportation Committee. These items will obviously be moving forward to the executive committee in the future, but some of the, three, three items that were on for discussion was the cost that was incurred by Ferguson versus SEVAG on the CV Link, which was thrown out by the, the courts. And there was $39,000, unfortunately, that was incurred by SEVAG on that. There's a couple of interchanges being talked about in the future, and cities are now funding the studies for those. DeVal, which goes through the city of Cathedral City on the border of Ranch Mirage, is actually, Cathedral City's moving a study forth to see if an interchange would be warranted for the I-10 in DeVal. Also, Portola, just recently, I forget, it was in the last couple of meetings, also is doing a study. I think it's already been warranted for that, and they're moving forth in the future. How long it takes to fund them, it's, it's millions and millions of dollars to fund interchanges, but if you don't have shelf-ready projects for when the federal government comes out with their funding packages, it's not viable. So those are two that have been moving forward by two other cities, and I just wanted to keep everybody on the, the watch for those.
If I can interrupt, Little Morongo, maybe, we can get that in the mix?
It's been talked about. So, we have to get a, we have to get a best.
Well, who do we have to call and hit over the head? Or you just take care of it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. Won't use violence. But another issue that doesn't pertain to our city, but I thought it was, it'd be something that you might wanna know, is that Indian Canyon from a, I'm trying to find the roads here, so I don't make it up, from, as you, most of you know, Indian Canyon in Palm Springs is one-way for a certain period. From Camino Paracela to Alejo, they're gonna be turning it into two lanes now. So those of you like myself, and only once in my lifetime turned a right onto the one-way street, you won't be doing that in certain areas anymore, but look forward to the construction to start very soon in Palm Springs on that, so.
That's Palm Canyon.
Just a warning, no, that's Indian Canyon. I also attended the CB Can Dinner and was able to speak. There was multiple speakers that night, so I got about 15 minutes to give a quick update on the city of Desert Hot Springs and what we're doing with the cannabis industry. Also met with Ellen Goodman, who is the foundation president for the Palm Springs Unified School District's Foundation. She leads the fundraising mechanism for the Palm Springs Unified School District. They're, they're a board of directors, government agency, but they can't do fundraising for certain things, so they have an offshoot of that, and she leads that up. She's got some great ideas for the future for them. Met with a company called Freevolt. They're a very large solar company, is looking to put a possible warehouse for production, manufacture production of solar. And I was showing them some sites in our industrial area and people to get in touch with. They also are looking at doing large-scale projects within the city from residential to commercial. Had my general plan meeting with our consultant. I gave my two cents. Met with many community members. The earthquake preparedness program that Nina talked about, I was gonna speak at the very first one, and then they rescheduled it, not realizing that it was a closing day ceremony for Little League. We'll try to push all those kids over there afterwards, but I won't be able to speak during that time. We're trying to get another council member to do that. I know Ms. Saval was checking her schedule, and if not, we'll move down the line and get someone from the city. She's as busy as I am. No, you're busier than me, aren't you?
Depends on the league.
Riverside County Transportation had their meeting, unfortunately, an emergency at work, was not able to attend this meeting, so I'll get an update the next meeting. Met with a, a new hotel project here in Desert Hot Springs that I think's gonna be great if they move forth. The Women's Club, again, I missed that due to a Little League commitment that I had, but I'll be sending my $100 for donations. Met with some more cannabis businesses that are coming to our community. And then on the next agenda will be the two other parts of the last part of the marijuana businesses that we have talked about. Also might be bringing back some items on that last agenda item. So, and June 5th, Mr. City Manager, there's gonna be a study session, correct?
What the study session will be about on June 5th is to give the opportunity to the cannabis industry to come in and discuss with the city council, before we present any further ordinances or changes to our ordinances, what they would like to see the council or the city moving, and what direction they'd like the city moving in, and to see if that's palatable to the city itself.
So we just wanna make sure, then, I know there's some cannabis people out there, that they get their voice heard. We, we moved a little too fast last time without getting everybody's heard, so we're gonna make sure that's out there. And the last, tomorrow night will begin, I do three, four, or five town halls, depending on who wants to hear them. Instead of doing a big state of the city, I did my first year, I tried, last year I went out and did, I think it was eight town halls. And I just kinda going out to community members. I had organizations that invited me and had three people in the room, I had organizations that invited me, and they had 200 people in the room. So if you have an organization, you'd like to hear the town, what's moving forth in the future, tomorrow will be the first one hosted by the Noon Rotary, tomorrow night at 6:30 at Miracle Springs. I believe if you're a non-member, it's $5 or $15 if you want dinner to get in, so. But besides that, we'll be giving our town hall. It'll also be live on Facebook if you wanna sit in your comfy of your own home. And yes, we can do that. I think that's all I have. I've been requested to have a break, so we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll come back to our normal agenda. to our normal agenda. Alrighty, we're going to get restarted here, if I can get everybody back to the dais. Alright, our next items is public hearings. Our first item on the public hearing is item number three, this is annexation number twenty-nine to the City of Desert Hot Springs Community Facilities District number twenty-ten dash one, services for APN six-six-six-three-seven-zero-zero-one-two through zero-one-five, located south of Nineteenth Avenue and east of North Canyon, Indian Canyon Drive, Blackstar Industries Properties. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor Mattis, City Council. With the approval of this annexation, it will ensure that the applicant developer, Blackstar Financial, will pay for their fair sh, excuse me, share of costs associated with the increased demand of services for a six-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-square-foot cannabis facility. The proposed special taxes for this annexation for fiscal year seventeen-eighteen is five-thousand dollars. The property owner has delivered to the city clerk a written waiver consenting to the special election being conducted by the city clerk this evening. All costs associated with this annexation will be paid by the developer. Therefore, staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution calling an election to submit to the qualified electors the question of levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to the CFD two-thousand-and-ten, which is annexation number twenty-nine.
Alright, at this time we'll entertain questions to staff, anybody have any questions to staff on this item? I will open the public hearing at this time and take public testimony, would anybody would like to speak on this item? You state your name for the record and begin.
Good evening, Ray Dormay, Blackstar Industrial Properties. Just really two comments tonight. First comment, we concur with the pending resolution to bring us into the CFD number two-thousand-one and also the P-tax. But more importantly, I, I really wanted to thank staff over the last few months for their involvement in our project. I've built over the last twenty-five years, maybe I stated this before, probably about a billion dollars' worth of assets from the western US, anything from single-family homes to commercial, industrial. And by far, from a scale of one to ten, this is probably a number ten in complexity. The moving parts, all the, the people involved, and it's been really a breath of fresh air. Chuck, his staff, Daniel, Scott, Jennifer, Marco, everybody has really pulled together to make our project real and really to keep it online and on schedule. So when you're done tonight, do me a favor, pat them on the back, I mean, they're doing a fantastic job. And I'll be happy really to sit down with any kind of study session to go through the trials and tribulations that we're currently experiencing across the board to make your city more successful. So we're looking forward to opening up here this year and partnering up for years to come. So again, that's what I had to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public testimony? Last call, final call, we'll close the public hearing at this time, city council discussion and questions. I see nobody in the queue, I will take a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor?
I need a motion to adopt a resolution calling for an election.
That's what we were doing, motion to adopt a resolution.
We have a second.
Second.
How'd you know what I was supposed to do?
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Please hold the election and canvass the election.
The property owner has voted in favor of the annexation.
I will accept a motion to adopt a resolution declaring the election results.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution declaring election results for the annexation of the Community Facilities District number two-thousand-ten-dash-one, services annexation number twenty-nine.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question real quick about this? Are you going vertical now? I've noticed you've been pouring some stuff.
Yes, great question, we are going vertical. Currently foundations are being poured. We have ordered two million dollars of steel from Utah, they'll be coming at the end of this month, first part of next month. So I say within the next three months, you'll see some real structures up. We're also working with our tenants on the TI improvements, so I met with Marco today. We'll be bringing in new revised plans for that. So the idea is to concurrently build the shell as well as the tenant improvements to be open by this year. Chuck and his staff really helped us out with Southern California Edison, we had a couple of bumps here and there, but they've really pulled through and we're back on track. So we're extremely excited, in fact, we're looking at building out the rest of the phases here pretty soon. So we could have the whole campus open by the end of two thousand nineteen.
This is really good news, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four is annexation number thirty, the City of Desert Hot Springs Community Facilities District number twenty-ten-dash-one, services for APN six-six-three-two-seven-zero-zero-zero-one, located north of Thirteenth Avenue, Hacienda Avenue and east of Little Morongo Road. This is Mandolin two. Ms. Kelly, is there anything different in your staff report besides the location?
No, except the taxes that will be levied for this particular annexation is fifteen-hundred dollars to the, to the developer. Therefore, we're requesting that you approve staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Entertaining questions for staff? I see none, I'll open the public hearing, would anybody like to speak to this item? Second call, final call, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Any discussion by the city council? I see none, I'll entertain a motion to call the election. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Alright, let's hold the election and canvass the election, please.
The property owner has voted in favor of the annexation.
At this time we'll adopt a resolution declaring election results.
So moved.
Second. All is in favor, or please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number five is creating a special tax area thirty-five, Blackstar Industrial Properties LLC for APN six-six-three-three-zero-three-seven-zero-zero-one-two through zero-one-five, located south of Nineteenth Avenue, east of North Indian Canyon Drive, within the Desert Hot Springs Special Public Safety Tax Area. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you. Zone thirty-five is currently comprised of four non-residential lots. The creation of this new tax zone will ensure that this development will continue to pay their fair share of increased demands to police and fire protection services. Once again, the applicant has paid a deposit of five thousand dollars. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance establishing a special safety tax zone thirty-five for Blackstar Industrial Properties.
Entertaining questions for staff? I have nobody in the queue. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anybody would like to speak to this item? Second call, final call, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion for, yes, Mr. Betts?
I just want to state I'll be voting no for the only reason is I don't agree with creating all these special tax districts, I'd like them all to be created in one district, thank you.
Alright, please hold the election and canvass the election.
The property owner has voted in favor of the zone creation.
Accept a motion to adopt the ordinance establishing of safety, public safety tax area zone thirty-five. There is a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Betts opposed.
Item number six is creating a special tax area thirty-six, Mandolin two, LLC for APN six-six-three-two-seven-zero-zero-zero-one, located south of Thirteenth Avenue, Hacienda Drive and east of Little Morongo Road, within the Desert Springs Special Public Safety Tax Area. Ms. Kelly, anything different on this one besides the business?
No, sir, just that it's one non-residential lot.
Entertaining questions for staff at this time? Nobody in the queue, I'll move to opening the public hearing, would anybody like to speak on this item? Second call, final call. I'll close the public hearing at this time, any more discussion by city council? I have nobody in the queue. Hold the election and canvass the election, please.
The property owner has voted in favor of the zone creation.
I'll accept a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Betts opposed.
Thank you. Item number seven is the two thousand seventeen annual housing element progress report and I see Mr. Tajnarep, so I'm assuming he's given the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem and council members. This report, until last year, only general law cities had to file this report with the Housing Community Development, otherwise known as HCD. As of last year, there was a new state bill requiring charter cities to all, also participate in this annual progress report. Our last housing element was approved and submitted in two thousand nine, that was for the two thousand six, two thousand fourteen cycle. As you know, we are currently doing a general plan update and then we're updating our housing element for the current cycle, which I believe is two thousand fourteen, two thousand twenty-one. I've gotten ahead of myself. Twenty seventeen, and you see in the report, we have forty-two single-family homes, I think the year previous was thirty-four and the year previous, something similar, thirty-eight. By our calculations and HCD's direction on how to calculate low income, moderate income, they all qualify as low income. That's based on a medium, median income, household income for the county, then based on a percentage of the disposable income and the, and the property value or the value of the homes. So by our calculations, that's the numbers we came up with. As of two thousand eighteen, this report has to be filed annually to also be included for certain grant money, I believe housing block grants in particular. Our recommendation this evening is to, for the council to receive the report and authorize staff to submit it to State Housing and Community Development and also the Office of Planning and Research. That concludes our presentation of this.
Thank you. We'll entertain questions to staff at this time, is there anybody in the queue or would anybody like to? Mr. Mckee?
Yes, I'm sort of surprised that they all came very low income. We have, do have some homes that have sold in the three-hundred, three-hundred-twenty range somewhere in that neighborhood, I know. And the, and because of your explanation, a person that had the median household income would be able to afford that, so it's considered low-income housing then, is that what you're saying?
I believe thirty, fifty percent of their disposable income, if it's that level that goes to pay your mortgage.
Fifty, fifty percent?
Yeah.
Holy Manoli, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I'll open the public hearing at this time and take public testimony, is there anybody would like to speak to this item? Second call, final call, close public comment, or public hearing and move on to city council discussion and questions to staff. I see no one in the queue, I will entertain a motion. See no one else in the queue for discussion, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number eight is the ordinance stating that marijuana manufacturing facilities as defined by the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code are not subject to taxes as contempt-
Contemplated.
Contemplated in chapter three-point-three-four and three-point-three-seven. Ms. Marai?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Although the city council has had this as a discussion item before and actually as an action item, this is more of a housekeeping item because it has to do with taxation- this is more of a housekeeping item because it has to do with taxation, and taxes are actually codified in the municipal code. In order to amend the municipal code, we need to adopt an ordinance to amend the code stating that manufacturing facilities are in fact not subject to taxation as in chapters 3.34 and 3.37. I'm happy to go through the ordinance, but we've had a study session and an action item back on March 6 of 2018. This ordinance states that manufacturing facilities are in fact not subject to taxation pursuant to the two chapters of the municipal code.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain questions from the staff at this, or from council to staff. See nobody in the queue. I'll open the public hearing at this time, and I'll take testimony in favor. Please state your name.
My name's Greta Carter, Desert Hot Springs. I'm in constant learning curve. So I... Last time this was on the agenda, we had prepared some extensive presentations to be able to garner your favor of passage of this item before. So I don't know if that is at risk and you can revote on it again because it passed last time 3 to 2? Or if this is just housekeeping? I know you can't talk to me, I guess, but...
Mr. Mayor, should you allow... I'm happy to clarify.
Yeah, no, she can address your question.
I'm happy to clarify. So what was on the last agenda was an action item to see where council wanted to go with respect to taxation of marijuana facilities, excuse, manufacturing facilities. Because taxation is done by ordinance, it's technically codified, in order to amend the code and make manufacturing facilities not subject to tax, it also needs to be done by ordinance. It's called the equal dignity rule. So what council does by ordinance must be changed by ordinance. Council does by resolution must be changed by resolution. So that's why it's before council this evening. It is a housekeeping item only for the codifiers.
Thank you, and full support.
Anybody else like to speak in favor?
Hello, Ryan Fingerhut, Hyro Consulting, one of the local businesses. I just wanted to also lend my support to this, to reiterate some of the points that were brought up by council last time, which is simply that this tax would be specific to cannabis, but all companies will still be paying all of the taxes than any normal business in the community would be paying. Thank you.
And I'll take... Any more testimony in favor? I see no one stands. At this time, I'll take testimony that are opposed. Any opposition? I see none. I'll take anybody in neutral position. I will close the public hearing at this time, and I'll open up for discussion. Mr. Betts?
Just for the purpose of making a motion, Mr. Mayor.
I do have another comment before we get to the motion, but I'll come right back to you for making the motion. Ms. Savala?
I'm just going to restate the fact that I'll be voting no for this. I think it's premature, and, you know, I agree that perhaps the 10% that we're allowed to tax on the wholesale gross receipts is a little high in comparison to the tax analysis that we received from staff at the last council meeting. But I think that, you know, it would be reasonable to at least adjust it and be competitive with the city of Coachella, and perhaps look at a 2% tax on the wholesale gross receipts, just as they are doing. I think to completely not tax it, I just... And not the regular sales tax, because obviously that's applicable to everyone, but I'm talking about the special tax that we, you know, are holding over the marijuana industry in regards to activities like cultivation and dispensing. I just don't think that it's appropriate at this time. I'd be more than open to not taxing it, but in the future, once we see, you know, seven years from now, how we're doing, I think to do it right now, when this industry is just taking off, and of course, all the projections are looking great. You know, I just think it's a little too early to tell. You know, seven years from now, 10 years from now, you know, we don't know what this is going to look like. Perhaps manufacturing is the portion of this industry that is booming and the most successful. We don't know. But it's just my personal opinion that it's premature. I will be voting no, and I'd like the record to show the reason why.
Ms. Parks?
I concur with Councilwoman Savala. And just one other point. We're the only city in the Coachella Valley that is not taxing manufacturing. And I agree that maybe it's a little strict, but I think it's a little early in doing this. So I will be voting no as well.
And back to you, Mr. Betts.
And just based on the original comments, that the ordinance that was passed by the voters did not include a tax on manufacturing, so it's really not within our purview to create a new tax without going back to the voters and all the other reasons. I make a motion to introduce... Is that what I'm doing here? Introduce for first reading and read by title only an ordinance of the city council, the City of Desert Hot Springs, California, amending chapters 3.34 and 3.37, and add sections 3.4.0.45 and 3.37.065, stating that marijuana manufacturing facilities is defined by Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, section 17180.030. We need a new attorney. And regulated pursuant to DHSMC... Sorry, just a joke. Section 17.100060 are not subject to taxes as contemplated in chapters 3.34 and 3.37.
Just for that, on the next item, Ms. Marai, you make it even longer, please. And I'm going to make sure that he has to read it. With that said, do I have a second? Mr. McKee? I have a couple people back in the queue. Ms. Parks? Ms. Savala?
I was just going to say that if we read the staff report and according to our lawyer, because it doesn't specifically say we cannot tax manufacturing, it means that we, based on how the ordinance is written, we can tax manufacturing. We're just taking a vote not to.
Well, I was just clarifying my position that I disagree with the city attorney. So that's their interpretation of this law.
All right, with all that said, please vote. Mr. City Clerk?
Motion passes with Mayor Protem Savala, Councilmember Parks against. This is a first reading of an ordinance as the title read by the maker of the motion, and the ordinance shall return at the June 5 city council meeting for a second reading adoption. I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize. So the ordinance takes effect immediately, according to city attorney.
You don't want to read the whole title? I'm joking, I'm joking. All right, moving on to the administrative calendar. Item number nine is funding requests by health assessment and research for communities, which is also HARC. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a representative from HARC here today, and I thought I might ask her to come up here because she'll be able to describe it a lot better than I can.
Thank you so much. I can talk about it quickly, though, to get you all out of here on time. So thank you so much for seeing me and for having me on your agenda. As you read in your packet, HARC is a nonprofit located in Palm Desert, and what we do is every three years, we do a survey of the health and the wellness and the quality of life of our Coachella Valley community. And I think, I'm obviously biased, but I think it's a very valuable tool that many, many organizations, whether that be government, or healthcare, or nonprofits, use to prioritize health needs in our community and to justify their request for funds. And many of the organizations that use our triennial survey are located here in Desert Hot Springs. Whether it's Borrego Health, who operates the Health and Wellness Center, whether it's the Boys and Girls Club, Shelter From the Storm, any of these really rely on this data to make their case for funding and to bring in outside funds to provide these really critically needed services. So we are launching our fifth survey in 2019, and I want to ask each of the cities to contribute to this cost. It is cheaper than before because I'm cutting it down. It used to be about a million-dollar project over three years. Because I'm shortening the survey, it will be about $700,000 over three years. And so I'd like to ask each of the cities to contribute $10,000 towards that. The Desert Healthcare District has been historically our primary funder, and we hope to continue that. I also support the survey by ask to the hospitals, to county departments, really to anyone I can think of. And I have to say, I am so pleased that City of Desert Hot Springs was the first one to give us money ever for the survey this last cycle. And I tell you, I've been having these meetings with the different cities to talk about whether I would be allowed to come before their council and present like this. And one of the things that just convinces all of them is because you guys jumped in first. And I'm able to show them this beautiful local feature of your city, and they go, "Oh, well, I want that." So I don't think I would have been able to pull any of the cities in without you stepping in first. Last time around, we were able to get support from Coachella as well as La Quinta. I'm hoping this time around to get a much broader base. And so far, my conversations with the cities have been positive. This is the first one that I get to go before the council. And so I would love to answer any questions you have about the survey or its benefit to your residents, or why I think it's an important part of our community.
Thank you. What I'm going to do is open public comments real quick. Does anybody like to speak to this item?
I just wanted to say that HARC is very important. You need data in order to get things. It's not just for nonprofits, but it is for nonprofits as well. And in order for the city to have data for information that they need, $10,000 is very low money. But particularly, I've don't... I have asked people with nonprofits to talk to HARC. They need the data, and they get the data, and it's viable data. And I'm just in support of it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this item? All right, at this time, we'll close public comments, and I'll move on to questions from council. Mr. Betts?
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to have some comments, so many questions, except to say you do make it very difficult to disagree or to suggest, make my further comments. First off, $10,000 is a lot of money, and I think we've got a lot of other entities in the city that could use that money. If all of them were lined up here asking for $10,000, it'd probably be more than this council's willing to budget. And so my suggestion would be to hold off on this until budget time and include a line item that has everybody that was going to... Because way back when, we used to have to go through and decide who was going to get the little bit of money we had for contributions to the different groups. And I know some council members were here at that time. And so my first request would be just to hold off on this one until we see what happens at budget time and do this in a more formal process, rather than everybody that wants funds coming up and asking them for it. But if I have to decide tonight, it would be no because there are... And I appreciate the work that you do, but we've got so many people contacting us all the time right here at home that need these funds, and I just don't think there's that much to go around. So my vote would be no.
Ms. Parks?
First of all, this is money in order to obtain necessary data that we need, that we don't have, that qualifies us for several grants. So without the data, we probably wouldn't qualify for the grants, and $10,000 is nothing in comparison with the amount that we're going to be getting for the grants. So I think you're a little short-sighted. So I will be voting in favor of this.
Ms. Savala?
I do think the data that we've received from the HARC report is really important. And I know in other positions that I've had, we have used the data for grant purposes, and we are able to get funding to do the work that we need to do in the Coachella Valley. And I think as a city, we can also use like the health statistics of our community. So I do think that it's important. You know, obviously, we're not going out and collecting the data ourselves. So it's great to have an organization that's doing that, not only for Desert Hot Springs, but for all of the Coachella Valley. I would say that at the very least, we should match our contribution from last year, which was $5,000.
Mr. McKee?
How many times in the last two years that we use the information for a grant?
I would say that we haven't specifically, but now our Desert Hot Springs Recreation Center is run by Borrego Health, and Borrego Health does in fact utilize the data that is provided by HARC. And in the future, as we continue to have them run different programs for us, they're going to have to apply for additional grants to do so, and I think that it would be worthwhile at that point.
Could we get Borrego to give them $10,000?
And then they'll charge us for it.
Borrego's providing the service to us for free.
So I've always been supportive of this from the very first time that I've seen the reports. I do believe that this information is very valuable. The city council 10 years ago made it a priority for health, public health in our community. We had no clinics. We had one and a half doctors in our community, and we had to find ways to bring healthcare to our community. Since then, we've opened up multiple clinics. Borrego Health's been a big factor. More doctors are coming to our community. I see it in the future. We're looking at possible funding all the way to the federal government, and these are numbers that we'll need in the future for that. I think it is a quality-of-life issue. I understand that, you know, we could wait and fund it less, but I think we should fully fund it. That's my opinion. Mr. Betts, you're back in the queue.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would really like to have seen some deliverables on this from last year, and so I'm sensing the council wants to go ahead with this and hope that they'll insist that we have something to show for it next year. And instead of the city manager saying, "Well, no, we haven't gotten any grants using this data," then he'll have a long list of areas where we use this data. So I'll make a motion to match last year's contribution of $5,000.
There's a motion on table. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to match last year's contribution of $5,000. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Parks opposed and Mayor Mattis abstained.
And just for the record, I abstained from this vote because I believe it should have been fully funded at the $10,000.
That's why I did.
Well, I didn't. I abstained. I didn't vote no. I didn't want to come across in a way that people thought I voted against.
I was not against the program. I was against the amount.
Thank you. Can I say one more thing?
You can wrap it up, absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, and we deeply, deeply appreciate this. And I'll be in touch with you to make sure that your grant writers do have this information. I know City of Coachella brought in a multimillion-dollar grant that used our data to talk about childhood obesity, to bring in some more sidewalks. So I do absolutely want to make sure that the next time we come before you, not just organizations in your city, but also your city itself has benefited from this data. Although organizations in your city benefiting your own citizens is the secondary one, I want to be sure that it benefits your city as well. So thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Item number 10 is lighting landscaping maintenance district and drainage assessment district. Initiate... I can't read anything tonight. Proceedings for the levy and collection of assessments. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Before you this evening is the first of a three-part process for initiating proceedings for the levy and collection of taxes for the citywide lighting maintenance district, 17 additional lighting maintenance districts, and 17 drainage assessment districts for fiscal year 2018-19. Once the city council approves these three resolutions, the city's consultant, web, and associate will begin the engineer's report for all the various lighting maintenance districts and drainage assessment districts. Those engineers' reports will declare the costs of improvements that are related to the maintenance in the districts, and will also list out all parcels to be assessed. The engineer's report will be presented to the city council on June 5. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution of the city council initiating proceedings for the citywide landscaping and lighting maintenance district number one for zones A and B for fiscal year 1819. Also adopt a resolution initiating proceedings for the levy and collection of assessments for landscape maintenance district two for the same fiscal year. And finally, adopt a resolution initiating proceedings for the levy and collection of assessments for the drainage assessment district number one for the same fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question for the purpose of recusal. I'm looking at this map with my phone to magnify it. Zone 11, zone 13, zone 13. I can't read the other one, but it appears that I am within those zones. And so I am going to recuse based on the fact that I have a financial conflict of interest, and I'd be voting something that affects my properties. and I'd be voting something that affects my properties in the North Mission Lakes Boulevard. So I will be stepping out.
All right. So now we'll entertain public comments. Anybody like to speak to this item? I see none. We'll actually entertain a motion or comments by council. Ms. Parks?
Since I no longer own property, and I'm simply renting a room until I'm, I can vote on this.
I have a question. Is the place that you're renting from, you have a lease interest in that, or at least your renting room from that place, is that property being affected?
Avenida Dorado.
Is the leased property being affected? Meaning, is that within the 500 feet of?
She's within the citywide.
In the citywide.
Citywide is okay. It has to, you probably fall under the public generally exception.
Okay. So the others are Ranch of Delaro and...
Well, there's...
Yeah, I guess I don't understand. These are citywide.
Yeah. They're all citywide.
So aren't we allowed to vote on it if it's citywide?
Yeah, I mean, no one should vote on it if, 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 if it all affects all of us.
That is correct. I think Councilmember Betts is just kind of in history, has recused herself prior.
There is one citywide, which is throughout the city, and then there are 17 separate districts for different developments for lighting and maintenance, and also 17 for drainage assessment districts.
Okay. You know where West and Avenida Dorado is?
You're in the city.
If you're in the citywide, that's okay.
You're Yvonne Parks right here. You're circle, you're not within one of these zones.
Oh, okay.
See, these are all the zones here.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's it.
She's fine.
That's where I am.
Mr. Betts, one of his properties actually touches zone 15, if I can read correctly, or seven, whichever zone that is. I can't read the number, his, one of his circles go through it. So that's the reason he's recusing himself. And the downtown one, I think his business reaches into it, so.
Seven or 14.
All right, that's clear to everybody. No one for public comments. I'll entertain a motion.
Move staff recommendation.
And this is on all three resolutions? Staff doesn't have a problem with taking all three resolutions at the same time?
No.
Okay.
No, sir.
Thank you. So the recommendation is staff recommendation on all three resolutions. Please vote.
Motion passes with a recusal by Councilmember Betts.
Thank you very much. Can someone grab Mr. Betts? There he is. Item number 11 is fireworks permits. Mr. Taschner?
Thank you. The city has advertised and provided fireworks applications and submitted procedures. We have the city website and over the counter to meet the city's code requirements. We did extend it a couple extra weeks to April 30th. During that period, we received five applications for fireworks permits. First location is in the Stater Brothers Center. As you can see, the location of the stand is close to Palm Drive, outlined in the red box. This is for the Desert Hot Springs Eagles Football Program. The second one is for the Desert Hot Springs Little League, located in the Vaughn Center. Third one is for the BPO, the Alex Lodge, 2639, located in the Rite Aid Center. Fourth one is for Desert Hot Springs Knights of Columbus, located in the Kmart Center. The fifth one is Souls Praising Heaven, and this is located down on Palm and Dillon in the Valero Gas Station. Each application was reviewed by the Fire Department, Police Department, Planning Department, Finance Department, as part of the code requirements for the fireworks committee. Based on that review, all five applications were determined to meet all safety requirements and applicable permit requirements, also for youth organizations, religious organizations, et cetera. Since all five applications have met those requirements, staff is recommending that the city council approve all five fireworks permit applications as submitted for the sale of safe and sane fireworks for the period of June 28 midnight to July 4 at midnight 2018, subject to staff's pending conditions of approval and meeting all municipal code requirements, Fire Department requirements. That concludes staff's report. If you have any questions, we're available for any...
Take public comments at this time. Would anybody like to speak to this item? I see none. I will close public comments and I'll open up the questions for staff. Mr. Betts?
Yeah, did you, who are the manufacturers that are supplying the fireworks? The same two companies as last year?
I believe it's TNT fireworks. It's in, it's in the agenda packet.
Okay, did we contact?
TNT fireworks, and I believe that's maybe the only company.
Did the other one not respond?
That, these are the five applications I would have to...
I mean Phantom. Did we not contact the manufacturers? Usually, they're the ones who handle the applications with nonprofits and then...
TNT has always been the one to do that.
Danny, doesn't the client, Danny, doesn't the client actually make arrangements with the company they're utilizing and then they present an application?
Yes, the client makes arrangements not only with the firework provider, but also with the location, and then they submit a complete package to the city. We just review it. But we do publicize it in our city website. We do have an announcement, and we did have announcements in our counter and in our city facilities for the opening period.
We posted it on the city website in what RFPs were.
We did, yes.
Okay, and the, for how long a period of time?
I can check, but I believe there's a period of time. I'm not sure if it was two weeks, but there is a period of time in our code to accept them all the way up to April 30th.
That's fine. The, what I would suggest next year would be, since there's only two manufacturers involved, it's only two letters, just send out both letters and then at least we foster some competition in this process so that one manufacturer, and I don't know, maybe they slipped up, or maybe they aren't interested, I don't know, but they had expressed interest before, and I'm surprised that they didn't bid.
Mr. McKee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the concerns I have is there are three really good sites and two less good sites. How did we determine who got what?
Well, the code allows for four different sites based on the requirements.
That, I'm not worried about the code. What I'm saying is, if I were a nonprofit, I would want either Kmart, Stater Brothers, or Vaughn's. I would not want to be in the back of Valero or in Rite Aid.
Each, each organization selects their own. The city's not involved in that process.
What if there are two organizations that want the same site?
That's, no, the city's not involved. I'm not sure how that works with each one. They might both be able to submit, but we did not have that today.
So just because I'm involved in the process before when I was with Little League, TNT or Phantom, they both come out and they try to entice the nonprofits. Once they get the nonprofit to agree to it, they go and secure locations that they agree to. So Little League always had Rite Aid for many years, and then they wanted to move to Vaughn's. So when the provider, the nonprofit that was doing Vaughn's decided not to reapply, they were given the Vaughn Shopping Center. So they get to kind of pick from multiple locations that TNT secures.
So what you're saying, for the most part, it's seniority that gets to pick which ones where?
And they're all about the same seniority now. They're all, all five, I think, have been working about the same amount of time. I think Souls Praising Heaven have probably been the last two years, but I think all the other four have been doing it for almost the exact same period of time.
All I'm saying is, if we got more than we wanted to approve, at that point, do we do a lottery? Or what do we do to try and make sure that it's a fair situation?
Isn't the lottery in our code?
Yes, there is a lottery. We, but when we send out, actually, when we evaluate them, we have everybody evaluate each department based on safety, on location, on requirements. On all of these five submitted, they all meet all the requirements. Last year, we proceeded with five. Therefore, this year, we're proceeding with all five instead of trying to eliminate or having a lottery.
Have we got any data on, you know, as my friend Russ says that Valero is a really good site? Have we got anything on what each nonprofit sold at the sites?
There is one on Valero, on Palm and Dillon.
No, no. What I'm saying is, do they give us a record of what their sales were?
No, we did not get involved, record or percentages or what they're winning. That's not...
TNT would go out and get the same location because they make, they make 40%, I think, of all the revenue. So unless it's actually making revenue, they would pick a different site.
Okay, thank you.
Just one quick comment. I think the good news here is that we didn't have to go through a lottery and pick them. They had to play Solomon, so TNT took care of that.
They do a good job, too. There was one year, I think there were seven, and they combined, they helped combine multiple into locations, so no one got missed out or missed out on them, so.
That's good. All right. Happy, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Well, let's move.
All right.
Move it.
Move it? All right. There's a motion by Ms. Parks. Second by Ms. Vala. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 12 is participating agreement with Coachella Valley's regional traffic synchronization program, signal synchronization program. Mr. Porus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As a way to improve traffic flow and improve the Coachella Valley's air quality, the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, or SEVAG, has been working on a regional traffic signal synchronization program. Part of the program includes completing a traffic signal interconnect master plan, and along with the master plan would be a corresponding multi-agency party agreement. The entire traffic signal interconnect master plan, what it does, it takes into account all of the existing facilities, the existing infrastructure in the entire Coachella Valley in relation to traffic signals, and it establishes very priority corridors. It establishes what is existing, what is needed to synchronize all the traffic signals, what equipment would be recommended, and establishes different traffic control management centers regionally and agency-wide. In order for the actual traffic signal interconnect master plan to take into effect, the corresponding multi-agency agreement would need to be in place. Before you is the actual agreement. Some of the highlights of this agreement are that a regional traffic management center would be established. Also, each participating agency would have a local traffic management center. There would be Transportation System Management and Operations Committee, which would be made up of one representative from each corresponding agency. That committee would set different signal timing issues. They would develop a manual to establish the equipment standards. They work out traffic, they would work with our traffic consultants and engineers to find solutions for complex timing situations. Another item would be a shared access to traffic signal timing between the agencies involved. Also, all the agencies must maintain and monitor all traffic synchronization elements for the part of the project. And if a local agency decides to opt out in the future, they must return, pay back all the funding that was allocated for those improvements. The master plan is completed, and executive summary is in your staff report exhibit. And there's also a ranking of priority corridors. Desert Hot Springs is listed in our ranking, and we are listed as rank number six in the Coachella Valley with the Palm Drive corridor. As you know, the City of Desert Hot Springs is currently completing our Palm Drive Traffic Signals and Lighting project. As part of the project, we are incorporating the master plan synchronization elements where we would upgrade all of our traffic signal equipment and upgrade all of our traffic signal elements, including some wiring and satellites and data for the synchronization aspect. So we're already putting in place some of these, some of the master plan into the City of Desert Hot Springs. What this agreement would do is actually establish different responsibilities between all the local agencies and the regional agency. On February 26, 2018, the SEVAG Executive Committee approved the traffic signal interconnect master plan and this corresponding agreement. Staff is recommending that city council approve and authorize for signature the multi-agency participation agreement for the Coachella Valley Regional Traffic Signals Synchronization Program. Again, attached is the executive summary and the agreement and the priorities ranking for the corridors. That concludes my staff report. I'm glad to answer any questions.
I think I'll open up the public comments at this time. Would anybody like to speak to this item? I see none. We'll close public comments. I'd just like to make a comment before anybody else, as I've been sitting on the Transportation Committee for SEVAG and also on the Executive Committee. The one thing that was talked about when this finally came back about a year or so ago, that, this has been talked about in the Coachella Valley for years, well before I was on the city council, probably 20 years ago, that this is an important piece to moving traffic throughout the Coachella Valley, as a lot of residents along Highway 111 cannot get from one side of the valley to the other side by not hitting too many lights. So it's just not synchronized properly. The City of Rancho Mirage is doing their own study. It has been a plea by cities around them that they participate, at least with their data, so that we can work together. But there's no word whether they will or will not at this time. But all other cities seem to want to participate. This is some funding. Once you get a shelf-ready project, then you can go out and finalize the work to be done. And so this is really getting everything in order for this project to begin. Mr. Betts?
Having taken a drive up Palm Drive today, I know we need this. So it'd be nice to get a little better synchronization. Do I have some questions? Are there any future annual fees associated with this? Is the contract spell out that future fees may be payable?
There are no fees established with this. All future construction would be, would establish whatever fee or whatever match that would be. I'll give you an example. Currently, our traffic, our Palm Drive Traffic Signal and Streetlight Project, the traffic synchronization components were, I think, about 330,000. SEVAG is paying 75% of that, which is 247,000. And we are also receiving an MRC grant for 50,000 for the remaining amount for the traffic synchronization. That was for that aspect, but all future aspects obviously would come back to council and would need to be established with the estimate and a funding mechanism. With the agreement, there is no expense.
So right now, what I'm seeing is there is no fiscal impact at this time. And I'm also seeing in the agreement that we can't cancel it without buying all the equipment. So we buy all the equipment, and then we've now, they come along and impose a fee on us. Can we say, sorry, we didn't vote for that fee and we're not paying you for the equipment?
If you receive funding and then you opt out of the agreement, then you will be required to return the fee, the fund.
All right, so my question is only about the fees. I just want to know that if I'm gonna get into this deal, it's like buying a, you know, whatever you buy on TimeShare or something, you end up with fees forever and you're trapped in the thing.
There will be fees in the future because you will have IT updates to the system. That was a question asked at Transportation. And the company doing the study did say that most likely there will be a fee in the future, but until the system's installed, and they know what those are, those will come back to your individual councils. But the actual hardware that's being purchased, it comes, 75% of it's paid by SEVAG.
Okay, so if I vote yes, I am committing to buying this equipment and paying it back if...
If we opt out.
If we opt out. And that one of the reasons I might opt out is if the fees, the cost of the maintenance, are too much. And I would think I would want to know what my maintenance fees are before I agree to do this. So am I missing something here?
Yeah, and that was part of the question that was asked, and maybe I can answer it for you. They don't know, because they don't know what technology in the future will be upgraded.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe somebody like Luke can answer that question. He's an IT guy, but that's kind of the idea we got at SEVAG was they just don't know what technology in the future could make the upgrades. Is that a, is that an analysis that can be made?
Has the city attorney reviewed this?
When they're talking about the future and technology, because of the complexities of technology and how much it costs and what it can and cannot do, I think that's why they were probably being cautious about it.
Okay, so I just, it's in black and white here, and there's a contract here, and it says either we're on the hook for future fees or we're not. And that's all I want to know. It's a real simple question. I know technology sometimes comes along, needs to be upgraded, there's a cost to it. I just want to know what I'm buying right now.
Not for the hardware.
Okay, but once I commit to the hardware, once I commit to the, I get the TimeShare in Hawaii for free.
Can't answer that question.
But then every year, I gotta pay an annual fee, and oh, I didn't know about that. And then the wife's mad. I go, I got this free condo in Hawaii. And she goes, oh, yeah, well, now we're paying 5,000 a year for this condo. What'd you do?
He hasn't answered the question.
Huh?
He hasn't answered your question.
Who?
Scott.
Oh, we can't, we can't.
He can't answer the question.
We can't, yeah. I know, his point is...
And I'm very reluctant on this. And then the other question I have is on signal timing. If you go through Monrovia, they've decided that their signal timing is, I don't know, good or bad. It's a really long wait when you're at the red light, but their philosophy is that a lot of traffic will flow right on through, keep them going longer, 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 everybody else wait, and then you get your turn, and they think that makes traffic flow better. You go to other cities like ours and some of our intersections, I mean, there's nothing I mean, there's nothing they could do to Palm and Pearson to make it better than it is now. It's quick, and we can decide, and like in Cathedral City, they've made a conscious decision that people coming out of shopping centers will automatically get access to the right of way, and people driving to drive. That's why Cathedral City is impossible to drive through. It's, if anybody needs synchronization, they do. Um, so, all right, I'm, uh, because I don't know what I'm voting for. I have no idea what the costs are. I'll save the rest of my comments for later, but I, I'm gone the other way on this one.
Mr. McKee?
I, I'm just interested in how they did the classification, since Palm Drive actually is the third highest amount of traffic. And for example, Ginatri, which is an extension of Palm, is ten, but it's, it actually would be the fourth highest. How, how did we pick what's where, I guess, is a question I have.
It was a complex, um, calculation method they used. I know I do, they, they do have it online, the entire master plan. It's thousands and thousands of pages. We only included this just for reference. I can send that to a council, um, when I, we do get the link. But it is a complex calculation. They, they took into analysis what the main corridors were, traffic, the width, the geometry, the existing, uh, traffic signals, not just the amount of traffic. There was a lot of other, other, uh, components to it.
Ah, okay. That explains everything.
I know. It's very complicated, but yeah.
They had that question, too, and I think part of it was collisions and, and, uh, safety also.
Oh, so we need more collisions and we'll move up then?
No, no, we had too many. That's why we ranked so high, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, there, the actual, if you want to see the equation, it's actually on packet page six oh eight. So you got priority ranking as a function, weight assigned to each criteria. So it's actually a... But I can, I can send you guys the, the full calculation method.
Yeah, that doesn't look that complicated. Anyway, it just seems strange to me. It's, it seems like a fairly easy thing. We all know that Palm Drive is pretty crowded now, and I've always been told it's in, at least in the top ten of all intersections in the whole, in the whole valley. And for it to be below Ramone and Cook Street, Cook Street really surprises me. I drive Cook Street all the time, and it doesn't have that much traffic. So anyway, then, just for my edification, thank you.
Um, Ms. Parks?
Yes, I use Monterey a lot. And I'm telling you, I get on that at the I-ten, and with its synchronization, I can get down to one eleven, boom, 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 boom. And that, to me, is synchronization in action. And if we can do that to Palm Drive, because we're going to be putting in a lot of lights, and if we don't have synchronization, we're going to have a lot of unhappy residents.
Uh, Mr. Betts, you're back in the queue?
Yeah, I'd like to, if I may, make a motion to continue this item for two weeks, asking staff to get back to us, let us know how much it is that we will be spending. And, um, because otherwise, I'm not comfortable, or, and the city attorney to come back with some type of, um, review as to whether or not we can back out of this without, if the costs become exorbitant.
Is there a second? Second call? Final call for a second. Motion dies. Do I have another motion?
Move staff recommendation.
There's a second.
I, I just wanted to, to make a comment.
I'll second it for now. We'll open up for discussion. Ms. Avala?
Uh, I, I do think it's important to participate in, in the synchronization program, especially if, um, we're looking at doing this throughout, um, the Coachella Valley. Um, so I, I totally understand where you're coming from, Russ, in regards to, um, you know, the fees and, and whatnot. Um, you know, but at the same time, it's like, it's, it's going to be necessary for traffic flow, um, as we continue to grow as a city.
And Mr. Betts?
I just wanted to respond that I agree. It's very important to participate in this synchronization program, but it's also very important to know how much we're spending to do it. And, uh, so I can never cut a blank check, uh, on something like this. So I'll be voting, it is a blank check.
Mr. McKee?
Well, I have this question, and that is, isn't the, um, both the General Assembly and the, um, Executive Committee in a position they have to approve any of the budgets anyway? I mean, we're, yeah, it's in the future, but one would think that, um, there's going to have to be some discussion and, and approval of, of amounts of money to being, be spent in those two bodies.
On the hardware, yeah. This is just the, the finishing.
Well, even, even on the per-year cost, I think there's going to have to be an approval.
I think that's already been approved in the last budget.
For, well, then there is a minimum amount of money that can be.
The, the current, the currency synchronization was a study, and that was approved. And this is, we're approving a contract to move forth, but each agency still has to approve their section as it moves forward, correct? And there still has to be funding for that.
But what I think Councilman Betts is trying to get to, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that, uh, for example, we have cameras that are located all over town that, uh, we couldn't afford to maintain. Because we, we don't know what the maintenance costs are going to be associated with this into the future. So I think, uh, the question is, and it would make, be legitimate, is that we approve the project, we move forward with it. When future maintenance costs are identified, does that go back to the General Assembly, to the Executive?
That was my question.
And are they the ones that are asked then saying, okay, we need additional bids, we need to make sure that this, you know, the maintenance on this isn't, uh, isn't prohibitive to be able to keep the prod, the, the project in place?
I don't have an answer for you on that decision that you, everybody needs to make. Uh, Mr. McKee, are you?
Well, can I, can I put an amendment in that, hopefully a friendly amendment, uh, that states that this approval is, um, based on the, uh, belief that both the Executive Committee and the General Assembly have to approve future costs?
Danny, is there a date certain that we have to get this approved by?
It was sixty days from March fifth. Yes, it was sixty days from March fifth.
It's passed.
Yeah, just passed.
Okay, so, uh, what we could do is approve it with your, um, addendum to it. And then we can come back later, once we've gotten some further information about how they plan on taking care of this at the next meeting, and provide you that. And then if that seems reasonable, then you can pass that. If not, then we will pass something at that point that will take us out of this process. Does that make sense?
Can I, can I speak?
Yes.
Okay, the way I understand it is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but seventy-five percent of the equipment is being paid for. The balance we are paying for?
Sorry, we pay twenty-five percent.
We pay twenty-five percent. Now, any future fees, they don't know because they, I mean, it, it, it could not happen for a year, two years, three years, five years, because they don't know what the technology is going to be. They're not ta, talking about a maintenance, an annual maintenance fee. They're only talking, if I understand it, that the, that the technology will determine whether or not additional fees will have to be charged at a later date.
I, I think there will be clearly fees for this because you're going to have to maintain the system. So, and that's Russ's concern. That's the reason I, I put the, asked for the amendment. And I guess the question is, will you accept the, the amendment?
What was your amendment, Mr. McKee?
That, that we approve it with the understanding that future yearly and upgrades will be approved by the, uh, Executive Committee and General Assembly.
Do you want to accept a friendly amendment?
Wait a minute, and then come back to the cities for their individual approval?
Well, we'll have to, my feeling is, number one, at the General Assembly, all of us will have a vote anyway. And, and we will be telling whoever the mayor is to follow our guidance then at that point, so.
Okay, if that's the way it'll, it'll work, I'll accept that amendment.
All right, that amendment. And, and just for a comment to staff, probably in the future, if C-VAG's going to have us vote on something that's requested, they have a staff member here. Anybody listening to me there? Okay.
I got one more.
Put it on.
What's that? Yeah, I just want to clarify, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, if the equipment is free, except for our buy-in for the equipment, hey, I'm good to go, okay? But, uh, you know, a camera system can cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to maintain. And if you don't have the three hundred and fifty thousand, the camera sits, sits quiet. Our police officers can't use it and look at it. And so if the bill was, accept this deal, and then also you now got a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item, and I don't think it's inconceivable that it could cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to maintain this, and that's what you're voting for, a budget item for three hundred and fifty thousand. So until we get clarification, I think it's prudent to have C-VAG come here, explain this to it.
In the amendment.
Uh, that's, okay, I got it. If you want to go with that, fine, but that's not good enough for me. I'm voting no.
Okay, do what you want.
And I just want to add this last little bit. I, I, if I remember correctly in the discussions, that C-VAG is also looking for grant funding from the federal government on this and the state so that they could bring the cost down for each of the local levels. All right, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion with the friendly amendment passes with Councilmember Betts' post.
All right, item number thirteen is the fire services contract. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council.
Ms. Marahi, that's not Mr. Mayor.
What you have before you tonight is the, uh, the cooperative agreement to provide, uh, fire services for the city. Our current agreement, um, expires June thirtieth of this year. This agreement would go from, uh, July first, two thousand and eighteen, for three years. And the services that are, uh, provided in general to the city are fire protection, hazardous materials mitigation, technical rescue response, fire, martial, medical, emergency services, public services. So, um, every, I think it's every two to three years, uh, I think the fire, uh, fire comes back to the city and says, hey, listen, if you still want to enter into the cooperative agreement with us, this is, this is how you do it. This agreement is for three years. The cost of the, uh, fire services, which are enumerated in the agreement, um, with a tax credit, and it's my understanding that the city does in fact receive, uh, a tax credit uh, for all three years, is six point three million dollars, closer to six point four million dollars, just thereabouts. So, um, I, I have actually, uh, worked on the agreement with county, uh, County Council and the Fire Department. Uh, I'm here to answer any questions.
Open up the public for public comments. Yes, sir. State your name, and your three minutes begins. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's what I said. There it is. Okay. Synchronization of the, I'm sorry, we're on the fire services, aren't we?
We are.
I'm still stuck on that one.
Sorry.
Sorry, I had public comments at the beginning of that one. Sorry, you missed it. All right, and, uh, there's a public comment, and if you really want to say something on that item. Um, I'd like to start out the fire services contract with, uh, we as a city of Desert Hot Springs need to really focus at the end of this, next, or during this next fiscal year on, um, a fire station in the east end of our city and the south end of our city. How many, we need to have a plan, we need to have property, we need to be able to go to, to, for, out for grants and build these fire stations. We've been promising, meaning the last six or seven city councils, and I've only been on a few of them, been promising, promising the east end of our city a fire station for years to come. And it's a seven to eight-minute response time, and the fire chief will tell you that's not acceptable. Five minutes is acceptable. And the south end of the city is now growing, and we're needing a truck company out there due to the fact of these large warehouses in the future. We have to have a plan to build more fire stations in the future. Um, the problem is, we can probably find grant funding, as the city manager continues to tell me. Uh, we can go out and find the grant funding and probably build these fire stations in the future, but the problem's going to be, how are we going to staff them? So that's something that we're going to have to seriously talk about. We need the plan over the next ten years, this plan, so that we can actually give our constituents what they need safety-wise. That's my editorial. Mr. City Manager, do you want to add something to that?
Now, through our lobbyists, we are applying for, um, grant funding for not only, uh, the, uh, fire station build, but for personnel costs. So there are fire, federal grants for fire services and, uh, fire personnel costs, so.
And we just can't keep our head in the sand anymore. We have to start moving forward with some sort of plan on this. Mr. Betts?
Yeah, okay, so the first year, I see a total of six million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Is that equally divided over the three years?
No, it is not.
So what's the first year amount? Am I missing it?
One million, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand.
Okay, that's there.
And two point one three oh is your second year, and your third year is, just one moment. Two point two.
Two point two.
Almost two point three.
Mr. City Manager, we had some conversations regarding per capita, and you worked out a rough number on the back of a napkin over lunch. Are we close to that?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and could we lock this deal in for five years?
Come out of a different city, a different battalion, and we're going to get you to commit to something that you probably can't.
Okay, um, so we're at a per capita of something around seventy-six. Do you have a number on that space? Let's say thirty thousand, population divided by one nine, one million, nine point nine. So, we didn't, we didn't put it in the terms of per capita. That seems to be the comparison that I'm running into when I compare other cities. Anyhow, um, and the county's okay, good with this, right? And there's no other additional charges that are going to come along down the line?
Correct. This is everything that we've received from the county as of, and this is as recent as last week.
If somebody else has any comment, I'll make a motion to approve. Don't tell him I was anxious to approve it.
He's trying. Mr. Betts?
Thanks, Chief.
No other comments by council, please vote.
And Mr. Mayor, just, I think, express our appreciation to Riverside County Fire for the services they provide our community.
Yes, Chief, thanks for coming to spend the evening up in Desert Hot Springs with us. It's much more fun.
Better than the meetings you're at normally, right?
Much more fun than all the cities, all the money. We, we have challenges up here, and we, no, I'm joking. All right, future agenda items, uh, if you want to talk to city manager about those, or me. Public comments, Ted, did you want to throw your comment in? It's already over. I apologize. You can take three years off my life.
Mayor, how in Desert Hot Springs, microwaves are working great this time. The synchronization, it's going to be hard to do. I was told by one of the instructors out there at the college, if you hit those lights just right when they turn green, you can actually get all the way to one eleven from the freeway without having to stop. Now, going to college the last couple of years over there, almost, well, five days out of the, five days a week, I've never been able to do that. I do not know how you'll be able to synchronize the drivers to hit those lights just right so they can get all the green lights all the way through town. That'll be the biggest problem.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments tonight? Anybody that didn't speak at the beginning of the meeting? All right, uh, upcoming meeting, the next council meeting will be June fifth. We are adjourned.